Welcome to the special meeting on July 27, 2020 in virtual board meeting manner through Zoom panels that we have been doing. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, that is a very weird thing to do, standing by yourself in your living room. Rokov, Mr. Mazurkovich, please.
Amy Bond. Brendan McQueen.
Here.
John Mazurkovich, here. Sheila Murphy.
Here.
Kim Motaker.
Here.
Beth Sorensen-Prince.
Courtney Stegman.
Here.
Now, Beth Sorensen-Prince is trying to connect, and where she's at on vacation has been a little bit of challenging, so she might be in and out a little bit. Is there any modifications to this evening's agenda? It's pretty specific for the special meeting intent, but I didn't know if any board member had anything modifications that they would like to the agenda. I'm not hearing anything, so we are going to drive, dive right in. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the July 20, 2020 regular school board meeting minutes. That was in our board packet. Is there a motion to approve those board meeting minutes?
So moved, Sheila.
Second, Amy.
Are there any questions? John, Rokov, please.
Amy Bond.
Yes.
Brendan McQueen.
Yes.
John Mazurkovich, yes. Sheila Murphy.
Yes.
Kim Motaker.
Yes.
Courtney Stegman.
Yes.
So our next item on the agenda is any citizens who wishes to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. We know we have quite a few people who want to address the board. We've been collecting names all day. Jen's going to try to help manage through this list. Everyone who is listening has been board policy for many, many years to allow three minutes for public comment. We are requesting that you try to stick to the three minutes, primarily because there are so many people who wish to say something this evening. We want to give everyone an opportunity to have a time to speak. How this will work again is Jen has a list, and she's going to start going down that list. She'll announce who it is and then open that person's microphone, and then that person will be live with everyone else on the panel and will have the opportunity to have a comment. So Jen, does that sound good? I will try to keep the three-minute timer on my, on my phone. And so Jen, do you want to read? We had some people who sent in some emails, and we were going to read those comments. I'm going to let you decide how you would like to do that, whether read first and then have them speak or however direction.
So we actually do have 16 people that submitted comments ahead of time, so I think if it's okay with you all, we can read those comments that were submitted ahead of time and then go on to the other. So I have 16 comments ahead of time. Then I have seven people that have already indicated that they would like to speak. And then I've shared with the participants that if you will raise your hand, once we get through the 16 and then the seven, I will move forward. So I guess maybe, I know that there's a problem right now that we have more than 100 people that are trying to access the meeting. So maybe if we could start with some of our public comments, so I'm not reading, I can try to see if I can increase our meeting attendance right now. So maybe just kind of reverse course a little bit, and we can go through the list of people that have submitted public comments. Tim, is that okay?
Yes.
I'm just trying to, trying to figure out how to, to make this work for everyone. So I guess I will go into the folks that I know that have asked to comment publicly. And Eric Roman, I'm hovering over your name right now. I will unmute your microphone. Eric, can you hear us?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, I'll try to keep this to three minutes, but my letter is a wee bit long, so I'll, I'll try to go fast but be clear. So, "To the Mount Pleasant School District Board of Education. Good evening. My name is Eric Roman, and I am a Mount Pleasant Schools employee as well as the current president of the Mount Pleasant Support Staff Association. I've been with the district since 2017, and up until my position was dissolved due to budget constraints, I was the Mount Pleasant High School graduation mentor. I am also a 1999 graduate of Mount Pleasant High School, and my mother served on this Board of Education for several terms during the mid-'90s to early '2000s. I am a forever Euler. Let me preface this letter by saying that the content does not come from a red or blue perspective. It is not meant to indicate that I personally do not wish to return to normal. I desperately miss my students and my fellow coworkers. This is about staff, student, and community safety. Tonight, I come to you as a very involved and passionate union leader, a proud staff member of Mount Pleasant Public Schools, a mentor to many of our students in the community, and as a person who has seen two personal friends die and several more have to be quarantined due to the coronavirus." These have been extremely trying and uncertain times. I cannot imagine the amount of stress that our leadership has been put under since the schools closing back in March. There is no precedent on record for modern times that can possibly match the highly politicized and public impact that the coronavirus has had on everyone across the board. I admire the speed with which Central Office came together and put a plan in action for the continuing education and safety of our students and community this spring. The candor and openness of the communication with staff members was truly refreshing and inspired. Over the last few months, we have been at bargaining tables, hashing out extremely sensitive issues regarding our budgets and our employees. It was hard work on both sides to reach an amicable decision, and again, the willingness of both parties to reach that decision was admirable. It instilled a lot of faith in my group and when, when we were finally to, excuse me, finally able to sign our little letter of agreement. When the roadmap to education was released by Governor Whitmer earlier this month, I admit a stone sank in my stomach. There was so much information to go through. It was an extremely professionally-written, well-executed document, but it is dense. The CDC and state recommendations for reopening our doors provided a clear pathway on how we were to safely going to approach a 2020, 2021 school year. I eagerly awaited to be called or emailed or texted after that document was released to discuss the support staff role for this fall, but alas, that call never came. Before I continue, allow me to let people know exactly who the support staff are. We currently have 15 different subgroups under the job heading. These include secretaries, the ISAs, special ed paraprofessionals, technical staff assistants, media assistants, kindergarten parapros, Title I parapros, career technical education parapros, at-risk student assistants, and hall monitors, over 100 district employees. At first, I chalked up the lack of communication to the timing of the roadmap directly before a major national holiday. I was getting anywhere from five to 10 emails a day from members of the Support Staff Union asking what the plan for the fall was. How are we going to address masks? How are we going to address large groups of students in hallways, lunchrooms, bathrooms? What about our MOSI and MICEI students with sensory issues? How are they going to respond to masks and gloves and constant handwashing? How are we going to monitor the high school with no hall monitors on staff? How are sick days going to be handled? What if a student is exposed? What are the procedures and protocols? I had no clear answers to give them. The administration at the high school put out an all-call to their staff to form a committee to come up with ideas and recommendations on how to safely open a school that houses nearly 1,100 students on a daily basis, not including the area technical students that bus in daily from Shepherd and Elma. This 12-person team came together and came up with a solid plan to safely divide that large population into smaller groups and provide safe social distancing while also providing consistent and effective learning. This plan never saw the light of day as the RESD arbitrarily decided it was a better idea to have the full population of that enormous building five days a week. How on earth is the high school staff going to maintain any sort of social distancing? How are we going to monitor all areas of that building? How are we going to enforce one-way traffic and safe lunchtime regulations? That building is strapped for available manpower and is too large and too unwieldy. Not all the high school-age students are behavior problems, but we do house an exceptionally large demographic of trauma students who will actively display defiant behaviors all day, every day. They will refuse to wear masks. They will refuse to be in designated safe areas. They will go in and out of side doors to leave, leave campus during school hours. They will congregate in bathrooms to possibly engage in vaping behaviors. The high school is simply too large to have 1,100 students safely in the building. Yes, there is a plan for...
Eric, can you wrap up? I'm letting you go way over, but I need to keep it over six minutes, so can you please wrap it up?
Absolutely. The end of the letter goes on to say that, yes, there is a virtual plan, but what happens when the kids and the teachers all become too sick to present and attend? I am highly dismayed by the RESD, and I wish, I hope, that the board listens very carefully to the public tonight before they cast a vote on reopening the schools. My letter will be sent to everyone present tonight and will be made public. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Also know that it is part of the record, and so his emails and everyone's emails who have sent the things in are part of the board meeting minutes record, and so everyone will be able to see all that information. We'll also try to make sure that all the, we're going to go through and monitor that although some of the emails went to just the board president, some went to just Jen, some went to everybody, we're going to kind of go through and make sure that all the board members have all of those emails, but we have quite a few of them, so we got a little behind today. Jen, can we go on to the next one, please?
I'm sorry, I was muted. The next person I have on my list of speakers is Alexia Torres. And I don't know that I see Alexia on the call. Alexia, if you are on the call, please raise your hand.
Jen?
Yeah.
I just, I just got a message from her that she can't join over MacStuff.
Okay, okay. So I did, I apologize, I did increase the size of our meeting, but I think because we're in the middle of a meeting, it won't go into effect until this meeting ends. So I did share with the group that I am recording the meeting, and that if anyone, I've been corresponding via email with folks to ask them to continue to send me their comments. So Brendan, if you wanted to tell Alexia she wanted to send me her comments, I'd be happy to share them.
Yeah.
That'd be great as well. The next person that I have on my list is Andrew Shinborn. And I don't know if I saw Andrew on this list either. Oh, there he is. Hi, Andrew, are you there? Andy, can you hear us?
I can. Maybe you could...
Okay. Yep, no, but we can, we can now.
Thank you for the time today and for hearing all of our public comments. I will be cognizant of time, Tim, so I appreciate you being our timekeeper, but I have my time here as well. I am a high school teacher at Mount Pleasant High, and I teach AP Lit and English classes as well. Just for those of you who may not be familiar with me, I've been teaching at Mount Pleasant Public Schools for about 16 or 17 years. March 13, 2020 was the last time I saw my students face-to-face. We gathered our books, pens, papers, and Dr. Chromebooks in the charging station. We cleaned out our lockers and classrooms. We joked a bit about the COVID-19, quote, "apocalypse," and I said, "See you in three weeks." On a whim, before I left, I looked to my classroom library, tucked away Mary Oliver's Devotions, Ross Gay's Catalog of Unabashed Gratitude, and John Warner's The Righteous Practice under my arm. I turned off the lights, closed my classroom door. I didn't say goodbye. I didn't think I had to say goodbye. Six days later, on March 19, there were 254 COVID-19 cases in Michigan, and yet, we shut the doors to the looming pandemic. It wasn't an easy transition to remote learning, but we did it. Despite the uncertainty and technological growing pains, we did it. The community noticed. Many called us heroes, though we knew our actions were not heroic. They were necessary. Teachers battled those odds for the safety of our students. The teachers I admire put student safety first. They understand that before psychological or self fulfillment needs, there are the needs of safety. We all know this. This is why we have school lockdowns. This is why we have fire drills. This is why we have tornado drills, to name a few of the precautions that we take. We take these precautions not because we think they will happen, but because there is a possibility that they will happen. As of July 26 yesterday, there are over 1,041 reported cases of COVID-19 in Michigan. 1,041 is just over four times the amount of cases we had when schools closed their doors in March. When it comes to COVID-19, we aren't preparing for the possibility of COVID-19. We are facing the reality of COVID-19, a reality that has no cure, no vaccine, and no way of knowing the residual lifelong effects. Opening the school year regardless of precautions means knowingly and willingly putting the health and safety of our children, teens, and adults at risk. The safety of everybody is something that we all take to heart. It's something we all have considered, and it's something we all put forth. And so I ask, we come here together in safety, virtually, for a special meeting. If we can't even come together face-to-face for this meeting, why would we think we can come together in classrooms full of students and adults that we are trying to protect? Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. The next person I have on my list for comment is Amanda Carey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, hello, everyone. My name is Amanda Carey, and I've been teaching at Mount Pleasant High School for about 14 years. Not only am I a teacher in the district and a member of the Mount Pleasant community, but I'm also a parent in the district as well. My two daughters will be in 11th and 12th grade this year, having attended Mount Pleasant since preschool. And did I mention that my husband is a bus driver and hall monitor at the high school? My family and I are very invested in the safety of our students and staff, ourselves and our community. As a parent, a teacher, and a community member, I've reviewed the Mount Pleasant Public Schools' return-to-school roadmap, and I have some concerns. Honestly, I'm not personally comfortable returning to face-to-face instruction if we will have approximately 1,000 students in our high school building at the same time five days per week. I'm much more comfortable with a hybrid model that consists of approximately 500 to 600 students maybe attending on Monday and Tuesday, the other half students attending on Thursday and Friday, with Wednesday being a day of deep cleaning. I know that this model was proposed to Central Office based on a high school committee that consisted of a member of each department and our administrators. The committee from the high school unanimously supported this hybrid model, but for some reason why, when it was presented to Central Office, it was turned down. I've had some of the teachers in my building tell me that they may be forced to retire early, resign, seek a doctor's note indicating they're unable to teach face-to-face unless a hybrid model or full online option is used. The potential loss of these teachers could then present our district with another huge problem that we have to solve. From a parent's standpoint, I'm hesitant to sending my own daughters to the high school with 1,000 students in the building. Have you experienced a high school with 1,000 students walking the halls, 30 students in the classroom, or 500 students eating lunch? I also think about transportation, because my husband's a bus driver. Looking at his route for the fall, his middle school and high school route will have approximately 75 students on his bus at any given time. This is going to require adult-sized individuals to sit three in a seat. How does one person monitor all of the COVID precautions that must be followed, drive safely, deal with behavior issues? How does he sanitize between runs when he only has approximately 10 to 15 minutes to drive from one end of town to the other? This, too, may cause bus drivers to reconsider returning to work, retiring early, seeking doctor documentation stating they can't return to work. We already have a driver shortage. What will we do then? I acknowledge that this is a difficult time and difficult decisions have to be made. However, our number-one priority should be the health and safety of our students and staff. I urge you to strongly reconsider the high school model that's being proposed and hope that you would support a hybrid option or 100% virtual. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. The next person I have on my list to talk is John Klock. John, I see you here.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
Thanks, John.
Hello, this is John Klock. I am a teacher at Mount Pleasant High School for the last 25 years, and I did not realize that most, if not all, of the high school English department was going to talk, so we're all pretty long-winded. I'll try to keep it brief. As many people have already said, I'm not going to repeat what they've had, but I do want to mention that what you probably already know is that this is a really difficult task, figuring out how we're going to responsibly and safely return to school, because it carries the responsibility of the health and safety of all our students, all our staff, and really our entire community. You need to keep in mind that, that bringing all our students together, our classrooms touch every household in one way or another in this entire city, thousands and thousands and thousands. Everyone you know has a connection to our school somehow. And so with that, mitigating the spread of the coronavirus in our community is on, on you. It's on us. It's on everyone who's involved in putting this plan together. The plan, as was mentioned, that was created by the high school task force, there were five task forces, as you know. The high school group put together a hybrid plan, which I, once I heard about it, I settled into sort of leaning toward, yes, this is the safest, best way we could do this. That plan is not in the plan that you were voting on tonight, is my understanding, that it was rejected and is no longer in there. My understanding, as has been publicly stated, is that the reason for that is because we didn't want other districts to have to compete with each other, that a district might decide, hey, my family likes Mount Pleasant's plan better, so that we're, instead of going to Elma, we're going to go to Mount Pleasant. Or conversely, people in Mount Pleasant could say, hey, I think the Shepherd plan sounds better, we're going to go there. And superintendents got together and said, we're not going to compete for students that way. The absurdity of that is, we have been doing school, schools of choice since 1996 in the state of Michigan, and that's what that is. There are other reasons other than the back-to-school plan that are generally used for that, but, but that's essentially what we're talking about, is schools of choice. This is something that you need to put together, that we need to do, your, your task here is come up with what is the safest way to return to school, not what's going to make people happy or unhappy. It seems as though the RESD plan of everyone does the same thing, so no one loses anybody, is about making people happy, not about making people safe. I know that your time, our time before we start school again is short. The balance calendar starts August 5, I believe it is, next week. And, and you, as a board, are feeling the pressure of, we have to pass a plan. But I believe this plan is a poor plan that needs to go back to the drawing board. I urge you to take the time to do what's right and to do what's safe. After I had all my remarks written down and figured out for today, tonight, I had a conversation with my wife, and we, we were talking about an article we saw, or something came up, and I got thinking about a student, former student of mine, who passed away. July 25, two days ago and 11 years ago, 2009, Matt Bowles, who was a student and a friend of mine, died inexplicably without any explanation. It, it hit me really hard. I know it hits, it hit a lot of people really hard, and I, I carry Matt's passing with me every day. 11 years later, I still feel it deeply. And no one's to blame for Matt's passing. There's no one to look at and go, you know, that happened because I did that. As a board, administration, as teachers, as staff, everybody who's going to be responsible for implementing this plan, we need to do beyond what's just required by the back-to-school plan. The required is the must-do. The strongly recommended is the should-do. The recommended is could-do, can-do-this, extra. If, if, God forbid, a student or a teacher or even a parent...
John, could you wrap up your comments, please?
I'm almost done. A word of pass-away. I think we all hold some of that responsibility, and I hate to think what it's going to feel like to carry that with you. So keep that in mind. We're talking about people's lives, and one life makes a difference. So tough decisions to be made by you. I don't envy you that. But keep in mind that we all need to do what we should do, what we must do when it comes to the safety of our community, and that means we have to do everything we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our next person that I have is Stephanie Sedler. Stephanie, I'm coming down to you now. Stephanie, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, hello. My name is Stephanie Sedler, and I teach special education at Mount Pleasant High School. First, let me start by thanking you all for the difficult work you are doing. I know that none of this is simple, and it's a lot easier for those on the sidelines to say what should or shouldn't be done than it is to actually have to lead and make those decisions, knowing that no matter what you do, you will receive pushback from people who don't understand the full complexity of the situation. So thank you for all that you do for Mount Pleasant Public School students and staff and for the wider community. And I especially want to say thank you to Superintendent Verliger for turning to your own teachers to produce Mount Pleasant's online-only learning experiences. I have no doubt that Oilers Online will be superior to any canned curriculum that prioritizes profits over pedagogy. That said, I am addressing you all today because I was floored at last week's board meeting to learn that all public school districts in two counties have agreed to fully reopen schools. In different times, I would applaud that collaboration, that solidarity, but these are extraordinary times. We can say that we are leading with safety, but that decision was not about safety. In some buildings, it will be impossible to adhere to the protocols necessary to keep students and staff safe. We can say that the decision was about providing the best possible education to students, and that carries more truth, since we all know that in-person instruction is better than virtual, but that's not the whole story either. If education quality was our number-one priority, individual buildings would have greater flexibility to plan for their specific needs. The needs of a five-year-old are not the same as the needs of an 18-year-old. Even within a single building such as the high school, we have a very diverse... Even within a single building, such as the high school, we have a very diverse group of students, and no single plan can meet all of their educational needs. If education quality was our priority, our back-to-school plan would be a multi-tiered system of supports that begins with a strong foundation of remote learning for all and adds in-person supports only on an as-needed basis. An MTSS approach would ensure that students who need in-person instruction the most would have it for as long as possible. And by acknowledging that remote learning will be necessary, such an MTSS plan would also ensure that our remote learning opportunities are as strong as they can be, because teachers, students, and families could be proactive and start planning for it now, instead of waiting for a public health crisis to force the shift. The hybrid proposal would also be much better for education quality and much safer than a full return to in-person instruction. But all flexibility we might have had to make our return to school as safe as possible was abandoned at the RESD level, perhaps even before any building-level committee assembled. And at the end of the day, this is about the same thing we've been hyper-focused on all summer, and that's money. Many in the community have said that they need schools to fully reopen, and districts are worried that even if it isn't safe, if they don't fully reopen, families will enroll their kids elsewhere, further draining our already-strapged financial resources. I get it. And no one in this meeting created the system in which districts have to compete for students as if we were companies bidding for contracts. But that doesn't make it right for us to pretend the serious risks of a full reopening don't exist. I wasn't sure if I should address you today. I am skeptical about the impacts my comments can make at this stage, but part of what I do as an educator is teach my students to use their voices and respectfully challenge authority if they think those in power are doing the wrong thing. And I can't keep teaching them that if I am not willing to do it myself. I have to speak my conscience, and my conscience tells me that with all due respect, any plan that puts hundreds, maybe even a thousand people in a single building where it is not possible to have cohorts, where they will mix and mingle every hour for seven hours during a global pandemic, in a region that is considered, not by executive order, but still officially high-risk, is wrong. Even at medium-high risk, it's wrong, it's dangerous. We don't even have a school nurse. I love Mount Pleasant Public Schools, I love my job, I love my students and my colleagues, and I miss them greatly. As anxious as I am about the full return to in-person learning, I'm also excited. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone, and in the case of my incoming freshmen, meeting them for the first time. I don't look forward to my students and colleagues getting sick, though. I don't look forward to the trauma we will all experience if someone we care about dies when it was entirely preventable. I hope I'm wrong, I hope none of this happens. I hope I can look back at this day, one day, and be a little embarrassed about overreacting. But I'm speaking to you today because I would much rather be a little embarrassed than give my tacit endorsement to a plan that gambles with people's lives. Schools are supposed to be safe places, please do everything you can to keep them safe. With these plans, we have done the best we could to make a full return to in-person learning as safe as possible, but it isn't enough. Six feet of social distancing will not be possible, and people will get sick. It's just a matter of how many and how badly. Is the risk really worth the return? Thank you for hearing me out, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Stephanie. The next person I have on my list is Nicole Cook, and I know that Nicole was not able to join in the meeting, so I did ask her to email me her comments, and I'll see by then in the meeting if she's able to do that. So the next person that I have on my list is Wendy Apple. Wendy, you should be able to be heard now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Apple. I am an Euler alum, a resident of the district, a parent and a stepparent, about to graduate the fifth Euler alumni child in our family. I'm a Mount Pleasant High School math teacher, and most relevant for this conversation, I am the president of the Mount Pleasant Education Association, proudly representing classroom teachers, special educators, social workers, speech pathologists, and counselors at Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I speak tonight in appreciation of the weight of the decision that your vote represents. The COVID-19 pandemic has created one of the greatest challenges of our time. None of the conversations are easy. Determining when and how to resume education for the upcoming school year is possibly one of the most difficult challenges facing all communities. MPEA appreciates many aspects of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools administration's approach to this challenge. The time that they've invested in developing district and grade band plan documents, the consistent message that health and safety are the most important factors in decision-making, and their quick engagement and negotiations with MPEA did not go unnoticed. Without taking away from any of the value of this, we also believe it's important to note that the initial assumption in this work was that the result would be in-person education for all students who do not self-select an Euler's Online program. We all miss our students, our colleagues, and our classrooms. We believe in the work that we do, and we know that the environment where teachers and students interact face-to-face best facilitates teaching and learning. We also believe that returning to in-person education must happen safely. This weekend, MPEA leaders took a quick poll of members, and I would like to share with you a short highlight of the feedback we received in response to one question. Members were asked, considering health and safety protocols, how are you feeling about returning to in-person instruction? Nine-point-five percent of members responded that they are comfortable and feel ready to return to in-person education. Twenty-four percent responded that they feel Mount Pleasant Public Schools should consider a hybrid model for instruction. Forty-two percent of members feel that we should consider teaching all classes remotely for the fall trimester. MPEA leaders acknowledged that members' feelings of concern are likely impacted by multiple personal factors as well as community factors. I share this with all of you on behalf of MPEA in hopes that it will inform and enrich your conversations about reopening. Again, we know that none of this is easy. I thank you for having these difficult conversations. Thank you for continuing to collaborate, and thank you for recognizing the message that your discussion and vote tonight represents to Mount Pleasant students, staff, and community members.
Thank you, Wendy. I am going to go back now, I was able to get Alexia Torres, so I believe, Amanda or Alexia, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, thank you so much.
Yep, hi, Alexia, I apologize for the inconvenience with the meeting.
Hey, totally understandable, thank goodness Amanda had my back.
Yeah, feel free to, go ahead.
All right, good evening. My name is Alexia Torres, and this is my eleventh year teaching for Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I am currently the English Department's representative for the Mount Pleasant High School's Back-to-School Planning Committee. Like all other district buildings, my building administration created a committee to, quote, "help shape what MPHS will look like in the fall," end quote. Mount Pleasant High School's Back-to-School Committee consisted of one member from each department, including counseling and support staff, our administrators, Patti, Vogts, and Winkler. We first met on June fifteenth, and after unanimously agreeing that it would be irresponsible of us to have the entire student population in the building at once, we proposed a hybrid-style schedule, which details I'm not going to go into at this time, because I know others have already done so. This hybrid design would ensure time for virtual learning, teaching, collaboration, and, most importantly, deep cleaning. While our currently contracted custodial service's lack of basic cleaning is a major concern, this is not what I wish to address. At the end of our meeting, we were tasked with returning to our departments to brainstorm key components of our hybrid plan, including before and after school, passing time, quarantine protocol, lunch, lockers, and so on. We planned to meet again in one week. As the week progressed, I felt more and more in support of our plan, because it seemed to be what other high schools of our size were doing, either all-online or some sort of cohorted hybrid design. Unfortunately, within that same week, it became clear that not only were our Mount Pleasant High School voices not considered, but also that our district plans to follow what all other Grasset, Isabella, RESD districts have done, and that is adopting only the state's required safety protocols. Our superintendent chose to ignore the attainable, strongly-recommended safety protocols and the recommended safety protocols outlined in the Michigan Return to School Roadmap, written by Return to School Advisory Council, of which Saginaw-Chabot Indian Tribe's education director is a member. And to my surprise, my building administration supported this decision to ignore, rather than support its very own team and recommendation. Individual departments have now wasted a week brainstorming ideas about how to organize these cohorts, schedule classes, construct learning spaces to allow for the strongly-recommended six-foot social distancing concept. We were told these ideas were either impossible, or they would take too much time to implement. With four percent, with our four percent pay decrease, I understand that time is money, but this also alludes to that both time and money are, yet again, more important than the health, safety, and educational needs of our students. We were instead pressured into filling out a document regarding building-level protocols, a document I'm sure you are seeing today. While that document is another check in the never-ending list of things to do, it fails to answer countless questions by our staff. Will individual buildings have a say in these protocols, or will we have wasted yet another week when we return to collaborate? I would like to remind the board, how Mount Pleasant's population constantly shifts with CMU and the Soaring Eagle Casino in our county. No other districts have this kind of daily traffic. MPHS is also the home of the GI Tech Center, where students from at least seven aerial schools will be traveling to and from our building. Are we to be responsible for spreading this virus to our neighboring districts? Furthermore, no other high school in the GIRESD has this high of a student population. I've heard some say they aren't worried, because Whitmer is sure to declare our region to be in Phase Three within the first couple of weeks of school anyway. But what if we aren't? Are we willing to take that risk? Are we the district who has to bury a parapro, a teacher, a student, before realizing our grave mistakes? Should we not instead focus our back-to-school planning committees on how to best prepare our families for remote learning? Should we not instead determine educational hubs for students in order to get face-to-face help that's needed and nutritious meals? What about my coworkers who are now faced with having to retire early or resign in fear they may expose themselves or loved ones to COVID-19? Should we not all instead equip our staff, parents, and students with the right kind of professional development to virtually teach and learn? If it isn't safe for school board meetings to be public, why on earth is school going to be? Please, do not approve of the entire MPHS population returning to the building at once. Consider a hybrid model, or keep us all safe and at home. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Alexia. I am able to allow Nicole Cook through Becky Hansen's account. Nicole, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Thank you so much for being flexible with this situation, I really appreciate it.
Glad we got it figured out.
Yeah, feel free to go.
Good evening, my name's Nicole Cook. My career with Mount Pleasant Public Schools started in the year 2000, as a staff member at Mount Pleasant Community Education. I'm currently the Counseling Department Coordinator for Mount Pleasant Public Schools and a counselor at Mount Pleasant High School. Over the last ten years, I've worked as a counselor at both the middle school and the high school. I also have two children in our district, one at the middle school and one at the high school, so I'm speaking from the parent perspective as well tonight. I want to start out by saying what everyone else has pretty much said before me, which is that school districts are in a lose-lose situation right now. Ours isn't any different, and I know our administrators are making decisions based on many factors that are outside their control, and to say that makes the decision-making difficult is an understatement. Counselors serve a unique role in a school district. As a result, we have unique needs that many times get overlooked when discussing plans and making policies. We will be some of the first staff to return to our buildings. Many of us are extremely anxious about what the school year will look like for us, despite having representation on the back-to-school committee. What safety precautions will be put in place in our office setting? How will we be expected to interact with students? Will we also be given the potential option to work from home, online? Some members of the counseling staff are considering early retirement or resignation due to the fact that, hang on a second, someone, okay, here we go, I was reading my speech and someone interrupted through a text, sorry about that, through lack of communication from our administration on how they plan to keep us safe, as well as the current return-to-school plan that is being proposed. I'm going to reiterate what some of my previous colleagues have said about our Mount Pleasant City being a unique environment in our RESD, we're a much larger community with both Central Michigan University and the casino. And in previous years, speaking from a counseling perspective, as someone who has done scheduling, we are always a unique district in our RESD. We always have unique needs when it comes to those pieces of the puzzle, and now is no different. We're going to mix in all of those kids from all of those other districts into our high school, and as a result, expose everyone in that building to so many other students from other districts, and I think we can agree, this is a perfect recipe for the spread of COVID-19. As a result, our plan should not be identical to those similar schools in our, or those smaller schools, excuse me, in our RESD. If we were to go ahead with the proposed plan, I have additional concerns related to the survey that parents were asked to respond to in regards to choosing the Euler online option. I have to say, as a parent, it's hard to commit to something when all the details are not available. I have spoken to and received emails from several parents who are confused. Many parents are assuming when they choose the online option, their student schedule in its entirety will be available online. According to conversations I've had with high school administrators, this is not the case. Online classes beyond basic core subjects may not be offered unless there are enough students to justify running the class. This is under the current model being proposed. This also includes honors classes and AP classes, in other words, those would not be guaranteed to students. To my knowledge, parents haven't been given that information, which would most certainly drive their decision-making. With all this being said, I want to express my support of the hybrid model that was developed by my colleagues who have been a part of the MPHS Back-to-School Committee. I would like to request that you vote no tonight to the current proposal, back-to-school plan, so there can be more discussion regarding the possibility of a hybrid curriculum model this fall. This model promotes the development of a student's social, emotional, and academic needs while providing the safest environment possible for everyone. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Nicole. I will go now to our participants that have raised their hand, so it looks like first is Riley Justice. Riley, you should be able to talk at this point.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Excellent, so my name's Riley Justice, I'm a community member here in Mount Pleasant. I'm an educational researcher, and most importantly, I'm a parent of two younger children in Mount Pleasant District. Knowing how the board works, I just wanted to pose a few questions that I had in talking with my family, related to the plans that have been put forward and have been reiterated by others tonight. So the first question, related to, Stephanie brought it up earlier, was with the difference of the executive order that was made in July, early July, late June, putting us in Phase Four, and the fact that we're in current status of Isabella County only being in Phase Two, has the board received any insight of that controlling authority? Who actually are we going toward? And is it really in the best interest of the community to go with Phase Four through that executive order, knowing that we're actually in Phase Two, and relying on the technicality to put students and staff back into a building? The second question is related to, what if that changes? We haven't seen anything in the plan of what changes if that executive order comes out tomorrow and changes to, now we're back into officially, the full transition to online? How does the district plan to pivot in those changes? So I was able to do some research into some things that the community, Central Michigan Health Department put out in their presentation. They noted, unfortunately, in their presentation, that they're not going to be enforcing through any form masks, any other requirements, social distancing. Is this really what we can expect from our community health leadership in Central Michigan? It's in the presentation that's right on their website. They also talk about that controlling authority. The other piece that I wanted to bring up was, with the limited information of an online plan, which I stand by completely, and the high-stakes enrollment decision we're being asked through that letter that was just brought up, as parents, how are we expected to make informed decisions on that process? With regards to that online option, has there been any determination of scope, of learning sequence, technical limitations, how are those going to be addressed? Instructional structure, teacher assignment, transition to and from online, if it's trimester by trimester, and so many other factors that just haven't been addressed yet? And as a parent of a student that receives speech services within the district, we've received no information about how those special education services would be provided through that online format. So there's just many... So there's just many questions that I have as a parent, as a community member, and as an educational professional, that I just don't feel comfortable enrolling my student in online, and I definitely don't feel comfortable enrolling my students to go back to school. I appreciate your time, and I know these are tough decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. Next, we have Jessica Lapp. Jessica, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Feel free to go ahead.
My name is Jessica Lapp. I'm a parent of a high school student. We are likely to choose the online option this fall for safety and health reasons. This helps my son and family, but not the district teachers, staff, and students who are attending in person. We recognize our position is a privileged one in that we are able to make this choice. I have a question or a comment basically that I just wanted to share. Board members before the meeting were commenting on the low numbers of COVID-19 cases in Isabella County. No one mentioned that CMU will begin classes on August 17th, bringing in students from all over the state, the Midwest, and from other countries. Whatever low numbers we have now are going to change. It worries me as a parent and the CMU employee that the board is not looking proactively at what will be happening in August and September in Isabella County. We cannot be complacent or imagine that somehow the trajectory of this pandemic will change if we pretend that we can in any way open an institution safely. This is true at CMU, as well as at the high school and at the middle school and the lower levels as well, in the K through 12s. As John Clark and other teachers have noted, the schools touch every household. We cannot underestimate the community spread in a city and a county with many high-risk individuals who have pre-existing conditions that we know now will be highly impacted by this virus. So I would just thank the board for considering all of these comments that have come in, and thank the parents and teachers who are making these comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have Cynthia View. Cynthia, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, as a previous person just stated about the curriculum for online students, I don't think it's right or fair, even if we do what you guys are saying now. If they want to go online, fine. If they want to go in school, fine. It's not fair to the students that actually cannot go to school because they have either a parent or themselves that are at risk for COVID-19. I think, per se, if those classes are not, sorry, getting myself messed up here. I think those classes need to be allowed to be given to the kids online also if things aren't going to change, because it's just, it's not right. It's not fair, and we're not being equal to all the students. And that's it. That's my rant.
Thank you, Cynthia. At this time, if there's any other call-in participants or, sorry, participants on the call that would like to speak, please raise your hand. I will go ahead and start reading the public comments that I have, if that's okay, Tim? Okay. Okay. This is from Amy Murphy. Good afternoon. After reviewing the Mount Pleasant Public Schools roadmap, I have a few questions. Will the online program, Euler's Online, be done in real time, or are students allowed to work at their own pace throughout the day? Are expectations different at the elementary level versus the secondary level? Will desks clean between class periods at the secondary level when students switch classrooms? When can we expect to see individual building plans so we can make informed decisions between Euler's Online and in-person learning? Thank you, Amy Murphy. This is from Dr. Tracy Brown. With COVID cases on the rise in Isabella County and predicted to rise, one wonders how the decision was made to give parents a choice between face-to-face for five days a week or fully remote option for their children. Why can there be a hybrid option with staggered classes on some days and remote classes on others? This seems to be the choice of most public school districts that plan to open in the fall of May. Many school districts have realized, however, that it is dangerous to kids, teachers, and staff to open at all, and have opted for a fully remote option for everyone. In theory, having children wear masks, keep six feet apart, and walk in only one direction in the halls might work. But we all know the kids are going to take their masks off and going to be closer to one another than six feet throughout the school day. It does not seem possible to follow CDC guidelines all day long, every day, especially during periods like lunch and recess. What is the plan if an outbreak occurs? How many kids or teachers or staff will have to get infected to shut the schools down? We all know that by the time someone gets sick, they will most likely infect many others while being asymptomatic. There was no discussion in the school board meeting last week about any of this. Dr. Tracy Brown. And this is from Krina Terracy. And Krina, I apologize if I'm pronouncing your name wrong. Hi, Jennifer, I do have one suggestion that I would like you to consider. For middle schoolers and even high schoolers, organizing them in cohorts, having all classes together and not changing classrooms in between subjects will drastically limit their exposure to infection. Using cohorts, if a student exhibits symptoms, the ones that will most be exposed and will be the classroom cohort, only less than 20 students, I assume. However, if they operate like in the past, with different colleagues in every class, the student will likely have mixed in the various classes with most of the students in their color team, which could be one-sixth of the student population. Furthermore, if they have lunch in the classroom, the danger to the general student population decreases drastically. Another argument for not changing classrooms, I know that this would be inconvenient for teachers but is doable, is that I do not believe it would be practical to sanitize all desks properly between classes. So the danger for transmission will further increase. I know that none of us want them to go to school for a month and be forced to stay home with highly limited instruction like in the spring. Thank you for your consideration. This letter is from Roxanne Fleer. Dear Superintendent and President of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools, I'm a parent, substitute teacher, and longtime member of this community, MPHS graduate 1988. I've read the Mount Pleasant Schools roadmap that was emailed to me last week and like to comment on it. First, let me say that I cannot imagine what a difficult job it must be for all school districts across the country to wrestle with the insurmountable task of formulating a plan to return to school this fall that is both safe and beneficial to our students' educational and social growth. However, after seeing what is being proposed for our community, I must say that I know we can do better. I'm having a difficult time sharing my thoughts without coming across as very snarky, so I'm going to share the words of other voices in the community, those of concerned parents and school staff members who I have been conversing with about this topic. Governor Whitmer has suggested that moving back to phase three is imminent if case numbers continue to rise. Our part of the state, as defined by the Michigan State Safe Start Map, is at high risk based on recent trends. Let's make a plan to get students and families with special needs to services they depend on while planning for most students to learn online. We cannot have the full population of our students safely in the buildings all week long, and that to expect sensory students, at-risk students, and younger students appropriately socially distanced and follow rules is unrealistic, especially when they have hall monitors at the middle school and high school levels. Teachers will spend 90% of their class time fighting students to follow CDC guidelines, and little or no learning will actually take place. How on earth is the high school staff going to maintain any sort of social distancing? How are we going to monitor all areas of that building? How are we going to enforce one-way traffic and safe lunchtime regulations? That building is strapped for available manpower and is too large and unwieldy. Not all high school students are behavior problems, but we do house an exceptionally large demographic of trauma students who actively display defiant behaviors all day. They will refuse to wear masks. They will refuse to be in designated safe areas. They will go in and out of doors and leave campus during school hours. They will congregate in bathrooms to possibly engage in vaping behaviors. This high school is simply too large to have 1,100 students safely in the building. What happens when a teacher or staff member becomes sick and then has to isolate? Not to mention other close contacts will have to quarantine for 14 days. If you are in an enclosed room with someone over an hour, especially within six feet of them, you are considered a close contact. You can see the massive domino effect of this, can't you? I'll bet you within two weeks, you see the first positive COVID case at the high school or middle school. I'll also bet that within a month, you'll be closing down schools again if you go with a five-day-a-week plan. I was expecting to see some sort of a hybrid plan offered instead of a five-day-a-week with masks plan. Many cities in our state around the country and around the country have already come up with a very well-thought-out hybrid plan that I feel will be much, I would be much more comfortable with. I beg you to reconsider, vote no on this plan, and go back to the drawing table. We need something that offers way more safety to our students and staff. They deserve this. I'm sorry that this wasn't the most well-written letter. I only found out about the meeting Monday night yesterday. Thank you for your consideration. From Missy Haggard. Jennifer, here are the questions I would like answered so we can make a decision on if we are sending our son, who has asthma, to the high school in August. Number one, will students who do virtual learning have the same teachers as those who do face-to-face learning? If not, will online instructors have the same credentials as the instructors in schools? Number two, if students do virtual learning, how are students going to take exams, take tests and exams? Number three, what will the policy be when a classmate or teacher or family member of a classmate or teacher tests positive for COVID-19? Number four, is it realistic to assume you can keep students six feet apart from each other during classes, given the space of each room? Number five, how will you be notified if someone in your building has been diagnosed or exposed with COVID-19? Will the health department be responsible for telling you, or are you relying on parents to inform you? Number six, who do we contact if we have additional questions regarding health concerns, policies before, during, before and during the school year? Thank you, Melissa Haggard. From Holly Burke. MPPS, will there be no hybrid plan or rotation scheduled? Do you have a projection of what the class size will be? Will you do six feet apart? Does online remove the ability to utilize electives? Are your teachers taking a pay cut and completing more work with online and in-class instruction? Is there a separate team completing online courses? Is there a program the school will use? Will masks be enforced? Will masks be provided? Who is writing the plan? Who is conducting it? Will you use a program? What is the program? Like, will teachers still do shooting drills? And how in the world will that look? Lockers will be a cluster. Would it be better this year to have students carry what they need in backpacks? How is lunch going to happen? If in teacher rooms, how many and who's in charge of that? Thank you for your help. From Leah Heil. Hello, I'm writing to send input regarding returning to school. Many East Coast schools are following the HUNDR, that's H-U-N-D-R, and then capital E-D, model that proposes one-half classroom capacity on Monday, Tuesday, clean Wednesday, and the rest of the one-half classes learn on Thursday, Friday, clean on Saturday. The children would do distance learning on the days they are not at school, and the lesson plans remain the same for each group. They would be better able to social distance in classrooms, as well as the cafeteria and specials that they attend during the day. She provided a website regarding the program. I look forward to hearing what our administration has to say Monday night. Thank you. From Caterina Marsini-Koff, and Caterina, I apologize. Hello, Jennifer, I know that Krina has reached out to you, and we greatly appreciate your willingness to listen to parents and share our thoughts with the board. I will outline a few thoughts that will help our family decide on the mode of instruction for our children. We believe that without knowing how many families are going face-to-face versus online, it is not possible to plan the safe return of students to the school system. For example, most students, parents choose online mode for their children. I would feel more confident to send both my children to school, kindergarten and seventh grade. Face-to-face instruction would be our first choice, assuming the following. Number one, the cohort group of children for all grades. Bringing children to a class, dedicated space for a certain group of children at the beginning of a school day, having them stay there the whole school day with the necessary breaks for recess, bathroom, et cetera. This group of children would always stay together and would move together throughout the current school grounds with the supervision of a staff or teacher member. If the current system where children are moving around the school grounds on their own is used, it will be nearly impossible to enforce mask-wearing in hallways, stairwells, and prevent students from mingling. In case of cohort groups, children might not need to wear masks in their classroom. Asking children to wear masks at all times may not be feasible for some age groups who won't put teachers in the position of policemen, who instead of teaching, will be chasing children to put the masks on. Limiting the number of students in the hallways as much as possible. I'm sorry, this is number two. If students are rushing to their classrooms, they will not be able to adhere to three-minute transition breaks, not to mention any social distancing in the hallways of stairwell. The less children are mixed and smaller, the chance of the virus spread, and the better it will be to trace cases. Teachers come to the same, as college teachers come to class, the same as college professors come to meet their student. Bring all necessary equipment on a cart. It will be way easier to clean the necessary materials for teaching between groups of children. I greatly question the teacher ability to thoroughly clean the classroom in a three-minute period. I also wonder if that should be their job. Number three, social distancing. Every personable large space outside school should be used, gym, cafeteria, et cetera. Weather permitting, classes should be taught outside. Number four, having smaller groups of children, at least at the beginning of the school year, will help. This will require a lot of creative improvisation. The biggest problem may not be with the space, but with the ability of teachers. Having some classes taught in person on the school grounds, then sending children home for lunch, and having a couple more classes online after lunch. Maybe two days a week can be one set of classes and the other two days another set, meaning children will not have the same schedule, but all the subjects will be covered in one week. Also, class periods may be longer with less variability throughout the day, having only required courses and no electives. I understand that in the springs, teachers were facing a sudden change. However, I'm hoping for a much more thought-out and deliberate approach in the fall. If our family decides to go with online mode, I'm taking responsibility for providing children with computers, internet access space, and appropriate environment. However, I do believe that teachers should, number one, assign all students to be on one platform. Assignments for the week should be clear no later than Sunday afternoon. Parents need to have access to all student assignments. In fact, all teacher comments regarding student accomplishments and work should be available to parents, too. My child was in three teams last spring. We had to fish through multiple posts to find out what he is supposed to do in a certain week. As a parent, I did not receive any comment regarding his work. Number two, teachers should not only provide high-quality tailored materials, printed or online, but also proactively reach out to their students as needed. Number three, I strongly believe that teachers should teach their lessons online. Live instruction should be consistent with the schedule and at least a couple of times each week. Number four, if as a parent, I will need to take responsibility for teaching my child, I need to know the goals and standards my child needs to achieve in a trimester. I believe that teachers should plan not to cover everything this year and should concentrate on developing the most important skills. Thank you very much for your time. From Amy Ford. Number one, I'm glad MPPS is providing families with the two pathways so that we can make a choice about what works best for each of our families. Number two, to help our families make more informed choices, I have some questions about the face-to-face implementation that I hope the board will consider in its deliberations. Masks are crucial to safety, as the MPPS plan notes, and my child is being taught to wear one. How will mask-wearing be enforced in classrooms? What will be the consequences for children refusing to wear masks or refusing to wear them correctly? Will families be encouraged to quarantine their children if they've been exposed to COVID outside of the school or if they have symptoms? Given that many families send their children to school sick due to lack of childcare, what additional screening techniques could be helpful in preventing symptomatic children from attending schools? Temperature checks or screening questions via Google Survey at the beginning of the day? If my family needs to quarantine due to COVID exposure, how will my child be provided access to the curriculum? Will regular face-to-face classroom teachers also be utilizing Google Suite to sustain my child's asynchronous participation? Or do families have the option to switch to the online pathway to encourage quarantine and limit potential spread? And the event of stage-three shutdown or local health emergency that requires a shift to online teaching, what kind of training in online teaching have teachers been provided since the 2019, 2020 school year? What accommodations are being made for teachers and staff who have CDC-identified risk factors that make them especially vulnerable to COVID-19? Can an advisory board appearance be configured to assist with implementation of both the face-to-face and online plans? If so, I'd like to volunteer for this advisory board. You are leading our schools in unprecedented times. This is an opportunity to build solidarity with the community and strengthen the role and perceived value of our schools, particularly in light of other character and virtual, I'm sorry, charter and virtual options. As a parent committed to public schools, I am eager to help. Thank you for considering my questions and offer to assist. From Dana Johansson. Hello, as a parent of two MPPS elementary children and one high schooler, I've engaged in several talks with other parents over the last 10 days. I started off quite skeptical and worried about the in-person and virtual learning options. As more details have trickled out about the Maguire Balance Calendar details and numerous safety options, I find myself impressed by the safety protocols to be implemented. I have a stepdaughter in Wisconsin whose school is doing nothing safety-wise for in-person schooling, except having teachers wear a mask or a face shield, but expecting his parents to sign a COVID-19 liability waiver. I find that unacceptable, and it makes me further appreciate the seriousness to which the superintendent of board had taken to outline elementary safety protocols. Thank you for your thoroughness. Next, I'm eager to hear more about how you plan to keep our high schoolers safe. Thomas Gearing. I'm writing to express my concerns about the Mount Pleasant Public Schools proceeding with face-to-face, five-days-a-week school versus online-only options. Both my boys have pre-existing conditions that make me concerned about sending them into a school while the COVID-19 pandemic is still raging. Even though Even though precautions will be taken, it is a matter of fact that students will eventually soon tire of all the restrictions, example mask use, and break these rules. Furthermore, it has been abundantly evident over the years that my sons have attended school. Parents often send sick kids to school because they have to go to work. I am certain that this will be the case with COVID-19 for this upcoming year. Plus, kids going to school may be asymptomatic and spread the virus. Alternatively, having my sons attend online-only while other kids are in school doesn't seem fair, the value of being able to socialize with classmates and teacher. I believe they will be at a disadvantage in terms of keeping and building friendships and learning class materials. These are unfair choices that I'm sure many families are faced with. To simplify plans and be more equitable in the face of this COVID-19 pandemic challenge, I'm in favor of Mount Pleasant Public Schools going with online-only delivery until either the pandemic has truly diminished or a vaccine is available. This is from Robert and Denise Fanning. Dear MPBS Board of Education members, we write as concerned parents of an incoming sophomore at Mount Pleasant High School. We appreciate the limiting, massively challenging, and unprecedented task of preparing for the school year during a global pandemic, and we appreciate the efforts all have undertaken to try and make this a safe year for all. However, after having reviewed the proposal sent to families, we fear the return-to-learn plan is dangerously ineffective. Faculty members, staff members, and particularly special-needs students will be extreme risk with the two pathways to learning presented. We fear the pathway one of entirely face-to-face instruction will be way too dangerous due to overcrowded hallways and the sheer density of such students in the buildings, disciplinary and health problems of students not adhering to mask policies, and many other reasons. This path feels negligent and implausible. What are your specific plans to keep faculty and staff safe? Are you listening to the teachers' voices regarding their specific concerns? What are your specific plans for keeping students safe while they are in environments with other students who refuse to social distance and/or wear masks? Is social distancing even remotely plausible with full-time face-to-face option? Who will be responsible for this presumably non-stop task of safe behavior monitoring? Our entire community depends on the decisions you are making for your students and staff. At this point, the choice to go face-to-face without appropriate safety measures in place feels dangerous to the community at large. You are asking teachers and students to put not only their own safety, sanity, and life at risk, but the safety, sanity, and lives of their families and the entire community as well. Regarding pathway two, Oilers Online, it will be difficult for some families to manage due to the daunting challenges of learning online at home for those that are working parents, and for those who may not have technological or personal resources to succeed online. We are being asked to choose this potential option without any information about how it will be implemented or by whom. With the climbing numbers of COVID-19 throughout our country, our county and country, online feels like the only safe option, but at what cost to the families for whom online learning is not possible or enough of a resource for their children to thrive? We strongly encourage the consideration of a third and fourth pathway. Pathway three, a developed plan that allows for very limited and managed population within the schools, perhaps staggering minimum populations in the building throughout the week, with deep cleaning days in between, and an online hybrid approach for the days away from school. We see many models for this approach throughout the country and world, even in countries who reopen schools with far greater management of COVID-19 than we are currently experiencing in the U.S. The fourth pathway we would like to consider is what we truly feel will be safest for all. All students begin the year online, with special care and exceptions being made for students and families with special needs or desires for additional support. It is imperative that you put the needs of high-risk families and children first, making detailed plans for how to support these students and families safely with face-to-face contact where desired, while putting care into meaningful online learning plans, which will allow other students to begin the year safely with relative consistency while keeping our families and communities safer. This online beginning can continually be reassessed as our country continues to evolve with COVID-19. As the majority of students begin online, plans can be further fleshed out and implemented to bring students back into a deeply considered and safe face-to-face environment. Thank you for all of your efforts to keep our community safe during this difficult time, and we look forward to the school year, no matter how altered it will be. From Pat Non, why will there not be temperature readings at school? We all know some parents are going to send their children to school even if they are sick. Can't temperature testing in the schools help everyone? Just curious. Thank you. From Rachel Schellmann, hi, Jennifer, I had a question about the requirements for K-5 to wear masks. Upon review of the governor's executive order from 7:10, I see and understand the requirements for children five and over to wear masks in public places. I'm just curious if this actually applies to schools, as the governor does not specifically say this doesn't apply to some circumstances, childcare centers, et cetera. And the return-to-school roadmap still states that K-5 students do not have to wear a mask in the classroom. I've not found any addendums or updates to the roadmap. I am in full support of face masks to reduce the transmission of the virus. My concern is that face masks will be a hindrance to comfort and learning, and that young children will certainly not be able to comply with safe face mask-wearing recommendations. If you will continue to require younger students to wear masks, will face shields be allowed? This seems to be a good alternative that will provide protection but allow comfort and full face visibility. Face shields would also be great options for students with medical conditions or students with speech issues, as they'd be easier to understand. Teachers might also benefit from face shields, as they would be able to hear better and their students could see their faces. They could certainly wear a face mask around their necks and pull it up if going near students for closer interaction. Just my thought is when it comes to, when it became clear that my young child doesn't wear her mask correctly for more than 30 minutes, I started looking into alternative PPE. Thank you for all your work. Your commitment to keep our students safe is evident, and I greatly appreciate it. From Kelly Strom, good afternoon, I am planning to attend the meeting tonight, and I have a few questions. I apologize that I missed last week's meeting. I've just tried to, I've tried to find out information for that meeting, but I have been unable to do so. Therefore, I do not know if my questions have already been addressed. My first question is, what is the policy for students? When does students test positive for the coronavirus, and they have siblings who are also students in our school system? Are the siblings placed in a 14-day quarantine at home? What is required for all those students to be able to return to class? My second question is about when a child is called in sick. Does a child have to have a negative test in order to return to school? In my case, I will err on the side of caution and keep my kids home if they say they do not feel well. They may not end up being sick, but I call them in just so they can return, or is there a process for this? Lastly, I read that elective courses are not going to be available for the online academy. Are AP courses considered elective? Thank you for helping with getting answers to these questions. And finally, Bridgette Bridgett, good afternoon. What will busing look like for the upcoming school year? I have two boys who attend Maguire and Poland. I'm sure they were able to ride the bus, even though those schools were not the schools they would normally attend. Well, we have that option again this year. We live just west of town. Will all elementary students be required to wear masks all day? How will lunch work? Will they be able to have recess? I'll be honest, mine and my husband's work schedule will not allow all of us to do online, but I am nervous to send them into the classroom or building. Thank you. And since I began reading, I have at least one more participant that raised their hand. If there are others that would like to comment, please raise their hand, so I can do so. But I will allow, Tiffany, you are now free to talk. Can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Awesome. I'm Tiffany Beckman, and I'm a kindergarten teacher. I've been a teacher for 11 years for Mount Pleasant Public Schools, and I'm also a parent of two elementary children in Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I just want to say thank you guys for your support in all of this, and I do not envy you with the task at hand, but I do want to share some of my thoughts from an early elementary perspective. I am worried the face-to-face environment is not going to be the, an environment for young children to be happy or successful. Kindergartners and elementary students learn with much movement, change of scenery. Sometimes just simply walking to another special or the cafeteria seriously can be our saving grace. Changes of activities, rotations of centers, and brain breaks such as recess and playing. I could not, as an adult, sit at a desk for seven and a half hours a day for five days a week and be successful, especially when you add a mask, and then not to mention the heat in our rooms in the fall. It's so hot. Behaviors will rise. How do I know this? I already see behaviors rise with the expectations that we put on kindergartners now. So to imagine this new environment where they are to sit at a desk all day and have little movement, change of scenery, and possibly play. I worry that in the face-to-face environment, elementary students won't be happy, and their needs will still not be met, even though we are in the school building. Frustrations and behaviors will rise, and the learning environment will not be steady. It will be choppy due to absences of sickness and just the things that take longer, such as washing hands, sanitizing, and bathroom breaks. Social distancing will be nearly impossible in the early elementary building. This means the things that I usually do for these young children, I will not be able to, to do. If I truly keep my six feet, I won't be able to tie shoes, help hold pencils correctly, help stuff backpacks, help children use the mouse on a computer, help them with their gear, such as coats, boots, and buttons. I won't be able to comfort them when they cry because they're hurt or they miss a parent, hold their hand or give them a hug. In fact, they won't even be able to see me smile as they enter the room or I try to comfort them. Students won't be able to play with others. In fact, things can't be shared, supplies, toys. They can't engage in center-based learning with peers, which is optimal for differentiated learning and meeting students' needs. They won't be able to go to assemblies. They can't play games in gym or even go to gym or art or music. Those will have to come to them again in their classroom. They can't check out library books or even browse the library to make their own selection of books to take home. In fact, traveling at all seems impossible, as a line of 25 children six feet apart is a 150-foot line. They can't go to recess. This is a tough one. They're outside, which is 100% better than inside, but there's no way that equipment could be disinfected between recesses. And I do have recess duties, so I know that kids do not distantly play on the playground, as they shouldn't under normal circumstances, but I feel it would be impossible to keep kids playing six feet away outside. It seems like all the social reasons to go back to early elementary are lost with social distancing. What about the safety of children during things like dismissal? Currently, the para has kindergartners hold the backpack strings of the kid in front of them, and they proceed down the hallway slowly to the buses and make sure each kid gets on the right bus, usually anywhere from 10 to 15 kids. Imagine 15 classes, all taking 10 to 15 kids to the buses. The hallways are full. We hold backpack strings to stay together and safely get ready to go. Imagine kindergartners those first few weeks who've never done this before. They don't know their bus driver. In some cases, they don't know their parents' names or their addresses. Now imagine these children in lines that are six feet apart, possibly 75-foot lines, if not longer, of children trying to be dismissed. And what happens when someone is sick? Not one of our buildings has a school nurse. All COVID symptoms are symptoms of everything else, literally. Do we send a kid home every time they say they have a headache, bellyache, cough, et cetera? Do we have to get tested to come back? Where do we go when they are sick? Something suggests the need for a COVID room. It's gonna be hard to find a new space in the school, especially when we're trying to stay spread out and distant. Who sits with the kid when they're sick? We don't have any extra support staff. Does the person in the room have personal protection, just in case it is COVID? And what happens if we can't get a hold of the family? What about buses? Will someone support the bus driver? What about lunch?
Tiffany, could you please wrap up your comments?
Yep, I'm sure. What happens when students don't keep the mask in the classroom or my children's classroom? Although I clearly appreciate protocols such as masks and distancing for my students' safety, my children's safety, and mine, these are some of the ins and outs of kindergarten that worry me with face-to-face with distancing. I'm truly concerned as an elementary teacher and parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. And next, Quana, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Quana. Go ahead.
Okay, I wasn't planning on talking, so I don't have anything prepared, and she just made me cry when she was talking, so. But, um, so I have three kids in Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I have a kid in Banjo, one at the middle school, and one at the high school. He's in a moderately cognitively impaired class, and he has severe health problems. There's no way, and I know that you guys have made precautions where you're going to have him go to Kenny, but still, there's no way I can, I can put him at risk in front of everybody, because he doesn't, he doesn't communicate, he doesn't register pain, so he's really sick before we know it. My, and because my husband and I both work, you know, I just wanted you guys to be aware of the choices that these families are having to make. My 12-year-old will be staying home with Taylor to take care of him so we can work. My 12-year-old, who is so proud of, of making it an advanced or honors algebra in seventh grade next year, probably won't be able to do it, because he'll be home taking care of his younger brother and his older brother. So these are the, you guys keep, you keep talking about choice, and every time, Ms. Verliger, you say the word choice, you emphasize it, like, these are these great choices that we have. The majority of the parents that I talk to, they don't have choices. They're choosing to send their child in somewhere where they're probably going to get hurt or get sick or quitting their jobs and not being able to pay their bills, not being able to provide health insurance for their families. These are the choices that you guys are providing to us. They're not choices. My son has to give up advanced or honors algebra that he worked so hard on. You know, he has to give up banned Mr. Tatum, his favorite person on the planet. He's gonna have to give up all of these things, because you guys think it's better. You guys think it's more important to have these people at school, 9% of these teachers feel safe? 9%? And that's okay? I'm not even proud of being part of Mount Pleasant. I've always been proud. You guys did an amazing job when we had to close down. I had no complaints. My kids were supported 100%. I did nothing but praise you guys, and then this happens? I am heartbroken. I am heartbroken for the staff, for my students, for my, for my kids. How dare you guys do this to them? How dare you? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Quana. Would any other participants like to raise their hand to speak? I did receive one additional email from someone that was kicked out of the meeting. So from Jessica Jernigan, hello, I was disconnected from the Zoom meeting and could not get back in due to the cap on attendees. After listening to staff educators and other community members speak, this is what I was prepared to say and would like to have added to the record of this meeting. Thank you. Everyone wants students, teachers, and staff to be back in school. None of the options available to us is an ideal or even good option, and I understand that the school board has been under incredible pressure to come up with the best plan for Mount Pleasant Public Schools. But I share the concerns of many of the people who have spoken tonight. I'm most troubled by the fact that I come away from this meeting with the impression that the views of the staff and faculty were ignored. I am concerned about the fact that as more than one educator and parent mentioned, families do not have the detailed information needed to make a choice, and I'm worried that the fall of 2020, we know less chaotic than the spring of 2020, and Michigan returns to phase three, as seems likely. And I have one more hand raised. James, are you there?
Hello, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Jim Baxter. I'm a resident homeowner and taxpayer in Mount Pleasant. And I'm looking forward to what I hope is a deliberation among the members of the board tonight. But I can understand why a lot of people are concerned about the notion that this is a foregone conclusion. Everybody's understanding, from what I've been able to gather, is that tonight's meeting is about action by the deliberative body elected by the citizens of Mount Pleasant to either approve or set aside the recommendation of the district. But I'm reading right now from the district website, looking at the two-prong, the two-pathway approach. This is our plan, is the statement. It certainly gives the impression that someone was given permission to publish a plan that has not yet been approved by this board. And it's going to be telling, ladies and gentlemen, if there's a simple, up, straight up or down, yes or no vote, without any deliberation from you going forward. Many of us watching tonight fully expect to hear you discuss these things and not simply vote without comment. And that's, that's all I'll say. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, Tim, I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you, Jen, and thank you for everyone who commented and shared their thoughts and feelings with the board. We appreciate hearing from the community and especially the staff. The staff seems to be a strong voice tonight and we appreciate it because of your expertise. So at this time in the agenda, we're actually going to have a presentation on the school plan and talk administration and the teams have provided for this plan. So Jen, I'm going to pass it to you.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. I have a variety of different district administrators that have joined me this evening. We're all going to take a part in looking at our return to school plan. So I'll just start just by, you know, letting you all know that we have been working on this plan over the last several weeks in collaboration with district staff members, community members, folks from the Gresham Isabella RSD, the Central Michigan District Health Department and Truon Law Firm. We're working closely to follow all the requirements and recommendations of Governor Whitmer's return to school roadmap. We're really looking and trying to answer the following questions. What do our students and families want and need? What do our teachers and staff want and need? And how do we create a plan that is primarily focused on the safety of our students and staff? Another important goal for us is to eventually return to in-person instruction. You know, from reading the roadmap that when we are in phase four, that is an option. The Governor Whitmer allows us to return to in-person instruction. In early July, we sent a survey out to our families and the 88.2% of our families that responded, there were just over 950 responses, indicated that they would send their children back to school and 53.3% indicated that they would select an in-person option if an in-person and a face-to-face option weren't provided. So we know that eventually we need to get our children back to school. We know that a face-to-face option is the best for our students from an instructional impact, but also when you look at the other positive impacts being in school has on our children. It has a positive impact on their mental health, on their food security, on their physical activity. As a school district, we believe that we need to care, to continue to care for the social emotional needs of our students and we do want to be able to give families choices based on what we know and based on the situation that we're in. I believe it's very important to note that this is a very fluid situation and none of these decisions are easy. There are no guarantees. The deeper we dig through this, we certainly find ourselves with more unanswered questions than answered questions. And that is concerning. So what we've assembled for you tonight is a panel of administrative staff members that are experts in their own areas. I'm asking that each of them would share their piece of the puzzle with regards to our return to school roadmap. So I'll map out for you. We have Kim Bishop here representing our elementary schools, Darby Weaver representing our middle school, John Winkler representing Mount Pleasant High School, Mary K. Vogts representing Gresham Isabella Technical Education Center. We have Josh Rhodes who is here to talk about the general safety and cleaning aspects of our school. Ginger Faber will be talking about lunch. Linda Boyd will talk about our Oilers Online program and Diane Falsetta will talk about our Balanced Calendar program. You can feel free to interrupt and ask questions during these parts of our presentation or we can wait until the end. It's really whatever you prefer. But this is the information that we have prepared for you this evening. I appreciate that many of our community members have not yet had the opportunity to have all these questions answered and quite frankly, that's because we haven't been able to put it out in this sort of format. So this is our attempt at sharing the information and we appreciate your listening and your questions as we go through the plan. So Kim, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Good evening and thank you for having us tonight as presenters for your board meeting. I am representative for the elementary DK through fifth grades tonight and I'm going to be sharing just our main areas of focus as we look at returning to school face-to-face and looking at the main areas for our school day and what that would look like coming back face-to-face. Some of these areas are also redundant. You will hear some information a little bit as we go through the presentation. So I'll just touch on it as some of these are bigger areas for some of our other presenters. So you'll see on the left-hand side that I have, or we have on this PowerPoint slide, the main areas of focus for us at the DK through fifth grade level, morning arrival. So our idea is that we would have a soft start to our school day where students are going to be able to be dropped off, whether they are dropped off by parents or it's part of busing, with a soft start as they stagger into the school where it will allow them to go to lockers, go into the classrooms to eat breakfast, take care of their morning business. Normally, in past practice, we have had students come to our playgrounds or if it was raining outside, they went to our gymnasiums and they were all in one area of the school building. So this will be able to separate students out as they come into the school and we're giving them also a longer period to be able to come into the school building so that they can, we can basically just isolate them a little bit more away from each other. And I think that's it for the morning arrival. For dismissal, we will be asking staff, students and parents to wear their masks as we do dismissal. So if students are leaving to be picked up by parents through, excuse me, through parent pickup, we will all be wearing our masks and the same would go for those students that are going on the buses. We will have our hallways marked for social distancing, so as we are lining up, they will already have markings in their classrooms for when they line up for other general areas of leaving the classroom and going somewhere. But we'll also have those in the hallways as well so that we can separate them out as they're getting ready to go onto the buses. For DK through fifth grade at this phase that we are in, there will not be school assemblies. Anything that would need to be done in the classroom would be just part of that cohort or that grade level. If we're doing some sort of a share or school-wide share, we would share just within the classrooms. For the classroom instruction and the environment, I'm going to touch on a few things. We are working on our plans for social distancing, for having desks facing forward. We're working on individual supplies. So as buildings, we are looking at what do our students need to be able to be safe and what can we provide to our classrooms and to our teachers and students? So that will include things such as masks, which was mentioned in our letter that went out to parents. We will also be purchasing lanyards so that we can connect those masks so that we can have an easier mask-on, mask-off type of mode so that when there are those instances where they do not need to be masked, it will be easy for them to remove the mask but yet have them with them at all times. And then that way, we're also not losing them and misplacing them in our day-to-day classroom activities. We're looking at different individual bins, baskets, organizers to help organize school supplies as well as manipulatives that they might use for English Language Arts or for math. Even things such as seat sacks so that we can put individual items, workbooks, notebooks and such in one area for each individual student. Earbuds are another example of something that we would purchase so that students that are using the computers or if they have ability to go to the computer lab would have their own set so that we are distancing those individual supplies. As well as we are looking at plastic dividers for our DK through fifth classrooms, plastic or plexiglass dividers so that teachers can still do some of their day-to-day instructions such as small group or conferencing with students and be able to see that teacher more clearly. But yeah, also keep that distance between both the teacher and the staff member. For specials and fine arts, in most instances, we would like for our students to be able to transition because they would be able to stay with their cohort or what we would consider their classroom or their their classroom, their cohort, and be able to move from one area to another if that seems possible in each of our buildings. Some of our classrooms, our specials classrooms, are different sizes. So this is a little bit different from one building to another or could be even from one special to another. So looking at each of our configuration of our buildings, we would be putting something out to our staff on which specials we would be allowed to do that with based on social distancing. But also, one thing that we would do is with PE classes, we would recommend or we are recommending that PE is held outside for as many months as possible and have the students outside for fresh air. We would be cleaning equipment in between. So once PE does have to resume back into the school building, we would be cleaning equipment in between classes. Same would be for the computer lab, doing the touchpoints such as the keyboard and the mice. And we'd also allow stagger times in between and that's not usually past practice, but something, sorry, saving energy here at school. But we would have stagger times in between class periods of specials so that the teachers would have time and it would allow them to individually do some cleaning of touchpoints. Looking at other specials such as art, individual supplies would be necessary in those classrooms unless that art class is specifically going into the gen ed classroom. For hallways and passing time, we would have staggered passing times to allow just one class at a time. Masks would be worn during that time and we would have directional markings on the floors, which was mentioned in the letter that went home last week. For lunch periods, this would look a little bit different from the DK two configuration to the third through fifth. Some of our lunch periods would be in the classrooms with supervision. So for DK through second, we are looking at having kindergarten in the classrooms with the support of the paraprofessionals as well as lunch supervisors that we have on staff. And then our first and second grades would be staggered more for their lunch periods. So we still would be able to have everybody eating and it wouldn't make for long lunch periods of going from 10 o'clock in the morning until 2 o'clock in the afternoon. With that schedule, we would be able to still fit them in in a timely manner. And for third through fifth, they would be also having some classrooms eating in their own classroom and then utilizing the cafeteria as well for the same reasons. And for the lunch, we, and Josh will cover this a little bit more when he gets to cleaning, but there would be additional cleaning in between the class periods that are utilizing the cafeteria. We also would mark the seats. So some of us have different configurations of tables, whether they're rectangles, whether they're circle tables, but we would be marking seats for social distancing so the students right off the bat would be getting used to going and sitting in a certain marked spot for lunch and then being able to social distance that way. For recess, we would be utilizing recess within our classroom cohort or grade level cohorts. As you know, the students can go outside without wearing masks, but they would have their masks on them because of their lanyard. So as we are lining up, they would be able to mask on when it's time to line up. Third through fifth grade does have something called social interaction breaks. Normally, teachers would have the ability to go ahead and take students outside really on their own, just as needed, as they start to see that maybe the students just need a friendly break. At this time, if classrooms or classroom teachers would be wanting to take their students outside, they would have to schedule that. For just doing an inside break within their classroom, that would be different. But for anything outside, so that they're not mixing those cohorts, the administrators in those buildings will be looking at scheduling those. For transportation, there's going to be additional cleaning of the buses in between the routes. All students and staff will be wearing masks and then they will also have sanitizer on the buses as well. So as students are getting onto the bus, they'll sanitize. If they do not have a mask, the buses will have additional masks available so that students can have those as they go to get seated on the bus. For the office, we will have additional plexiglass barrier at the secretary's desk or the main parts of the desk. We will also have health screeners for visitors that do come to the building. And that brings me to guests and volunteers. Unfortunately, that will have to be on a limited access to parents and any outside organizations and those are some things that we're working on as far as which organizations would need to have building access. But for those that do come to the building, we will have a health screening for them to take. Technology. We did look at technology. Most of us are pretty well set with technology in our classrooms with Chromebooks and desktop computers. If we are going to the lab, it would be cleaned in between class periods, but also with classroom Chromebooks or Chromebooks in the classrooms, that teachers would be able to individually assign those to students so that the student or a child is always using their own same Chromebook, their own same mouse as well as the earphones or headphones to go with it. Cleaning, which Josh will touch base on this as well, but there will be additional cleaning schedules of the bathrooms, touchpoints in the building and playground equipment. There will also be additional sanitizing stations that will be placed outside of the school building so that as students are coming in, they can sanitize, like if they're just coming to school for the day, sanitize as they come in. There will also be additional ones around some of the common areas of the school building so that they can, as they're done with lunch and they're heading maybe to a recess, they can sanitize on their way out as well. And then we will all have a quarantine area for both staff and students. And I know I'm trying to be quick, so I know there's many more presenters to talk and share. So I think those are the main areas that we are all covering and I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
My recommend for board members, if we have questions about certain grade levels, the way Jen has it laid out, it may be easier to ask questions regarding those general grade levels now at the end of that presentation instead of waiting to the end. So I'd like to open it up for any questions regarding what Kim just presented on the DK five overview. I also want the public to understand that this ties directly with the actual protocols and reports that are on the website that are broken down into various ways based on the template that the state is using to monitor these things. But does any board member have any questions regarding DK five overview of plan?
Yeah, I got a question. Actually, I got a couple. Will the additional amount of cleaning time required for cleaning and transition to and from school and between classes call for an extended school day, less classes or both?
Oh, sorry. I was thinking I was muted. No, we feel like with our, with being able to schedule things out, that we don't need any additional instructional time added on to the day or anything like that. It would just be built into the schedule that we already have. We have the ability to schedule the fine arts and things within our own building schedules and so we would just make sure we take that upon ourselves to build in that time.
Thank you. And actually, this might be a better question for Josh in his section about training on cleaning. Unless you think you can field that, we can wait till Josh for that question?
I think Josh is going to cover that.
I have a question regarding the number of children per classroom. I know that there are a fair amount of families that are considering going online and I was just wondering if there was any idea about how many children may be in a classroom at once?
I think, I think right, oh, go ahead, Jen.
Well, I was just going to say, because we've not yet asked our families for that solid commitment for the online program, we don't have those solid numbers to offer this evening. So our plan, based on the feedback that we've already received from the community, is that about 20% of our students will select the online option. From that, then we would be able to reduce class sizes, which would create an environment where we can appropriately social distance our students. But I don't have exact numbers to give you today because we haven't asked our families for that firm commitment yet.
Thank you.
Yeah, then on that, on that line, would it be smart for us to limit how many? I mean, have we thought about that, about saying we have room for X amount if you want in face-to-face? You know, limiting how many would? I mean, I don't know if that would be a possibility or not. And what would be a comfortable, what would you, the staff be comfortable at bringing back? Is 80% a comfortable figure or?
Yeah, I don't, do you mean limit, so have everyone go online and then have a small group be able to come back face-to-face? Is that what? Is that why?
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is if you say like with our, basically, we have so many open face to face. So if that's what you, you choose, then it would almost be a lottery system like we do with the balanced calendar. We only have so many seats available if you want to do face to face, if you want to keep that lower nut, or is that not a concern? And quite honestly, the reading I've been doing on this age group, the Science Mag in July of this year, they're showing that this age group has very, very low possibility of, of any kind of transmission through, through the ones that have already opened up and that type of thing, the other countries and that type of thing. It's a really interesting article. But would limiting the number make people feel more comfortable sending their kids back to a face to face?
So that's, that's not something that we, that's not the model that we've talked about or that we've looked at, but we certainly could consider that. We've talked about making sure that families do have the option and then looking at our student population in our buildings after those families commit to the online program.
Jen, is there a timeline for that commitment?
Linda's gonna cover that in, in her section of our presentation, but we're, we're hoping that families would commit by August 7th, so two weeks. They have two weeks to gather information, get their questions answered, and then make that commitment.
Kim, I have a couple of questions. One, can you share, there seems to be some perception that not necessarily all of this thought was done in a group setting. Could you share some of the members and who you had represented in your DK five group that built some of these recommendations?
Yes, we had all of the administrators in the DK through fifth, and then as teachers, we reached out to teacher leaders, not necessarily in a face to face format, but virtually over the phone with questions, asking them things, what their thoughts were on certain supplies or things that we might need. So we each had some, some teachers and staff that we reached out to as part, part of our plan.
Another question I had, had was, in general, how many students are in a kindergarten-ish to let's say third grader? So we're in the, in the low twenties, correct?
Yes.
Goes up a little bit more, does it go up in the fifth grade-ish area? I know we have it stepped.
Right, by, by contract, third through fifth have a little bit more between 27 and 29 that they can, that they can take. But I don't believe that they are all, all those, each of those buildings are there in their class size. And then that's also not taking into consider, into consideration or taking out any families yet that have already said that they are not coming back and are doing online. So, you know, it's, it's hard to say, we're, we're all looking at, at different numbers right now, but I would say we're ranging anywhere from in a kindergarten classroom of 17 kids in one building, but maybe 22 in another. And probably at most, probably 24. But like I said, that's without taking out any other students at this time.
Another question I have is, there was some concern about that, the perception that even the teachers at all times have to remain six feet away from all of the students. And I didn't see any, kind of like conversation about whether the parameters the district will put on educators on the interaction with students. Is it all going to have to be through plexiglass or six feet? Or was there any conversation about grade level and what those needs may be, to give some guidance to the staff? There seems to be some concerns about that.
Okay. I mean, our hope is that we can have teachers social distance the six feet while doing classroom instruction, whether it's a whole group or using, such as a plexiglass divider to run a small group. We have not looked at anything that would be more of a classroom type of supplier PPE that goes in front of the teacher as they're teaching a, a whole group lesson, but more of just arranging the classroom to be able to social distance themselves. So arranging the classroom so the desks are apart, they're leaving areas for when they do want to do more of a whole group lesson, but yet be able to social distance the students, be able to social distance themselves in front of the students.
So let's say, as an example that was brought up, if a kindergarten needed their shoelaces tied, would the educator be allowed to do that or not do that? Or how, how is that, how is that kind of foreseen?
We haven't gotten in, we haven't talked specifically about some situations such as that, both the, the staff member and the, and the student will have masks on. You know, I think we have to just, you know, we're, we're there to help students and, you know, we have, we can do, we have to do probably what's comfortable for us. If it's not a comfortable situation, that, that would be something that we would avoid, or we would encourage staff to also avoid.
The other thing that I knew is, in the curriculum, we don't necessarily at this point have anything on what does hand sanitizing mean, what does hand washing mean, what does that look like? I saw some information that that is going to be, something that's going to be added to the curriculum to help these young students who may not have those experiences. Can you talk a little bit to that?
Yes, I think Josh will touch on this as well, but part of some of our back to school PD, teachers will have some online courses that they will be watching as far as sanitizing. And then we have lessons that can be built in or taken from Michigan Model as well as second steps. And there are some other things that we can look at for building in the sanitizing lessons and the cleaning lessons into the school day. We all, I don't know if Josh has touched, I can't remember if this is part of his PowerPoint as well, but posters that we will be printing off to put throughout the classrooms and in the hallways, sorry, and other common areas that will also give reminders about healthy protocols will be used.
Thank you. Does any other board members have any questions regarding this DK five space and the presentation that Kim just did? Go ahead, Jen, why don't we go on to the next section? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Kim. So we'll go on to the next section, which is middle school overview with Darby Weaver.
Hello. A lot of the points that Kim hit on are some of the same things that carry on district wide, so some of them will be repeats. But first thing, especially at the middle school, masks are to be worn at all times throughout the day unless eating, and that's by staff and students. The district's going to provide one washable mask for every student, and then disposable masks will be available if a student happens to forget their washable mask or needs a replacement. So students will be entering the building where we'll have hand sanitizing stations at all of the entrances and that they enter through in the morning. We are looking at the middle school, asking that parents and the buses do not drop the students off until a little bit later than the time they have been now, so there's not as much time between drop off and time that the actual classes start. And also looking at how we can social distance the students for morning arrival so that we're utilizing some classrooms and some open spaces where we can, can keep them separate. Breakfast will still be served in the morning, so cafeteria will be used just for those students eating breakfast. And our cafeteria for breakfast and lunch will be marked off for social distancing in, in the cafeteria. In our hallways, we'll have directional traffic arrows for students to follow during passing time. We are looking at possibly putting into place a staggered passing time. We haven't finalized that, but something we're working on. When students are in the hallways, they're going to need to be moving and have their masks on, and social distancing again will be enforced and that continued movement will be encouraged. So we do have, when I say staff that will be monitoring that, that doesn't just mean teachers, but we have staff in the building that will be helping with that passing time, monitoring the passing time. When students enter classrooms, we'll be sanitizing their hands, and then the classrooms will be disinfected in between class periods. Technologies that use, that is used will also be disinfected in between the class periods, for example, Chromebooks or calculators. In the classroom, students' desks will be facing the same way, socially distanced from their peers and teacher. Masks will be worn. Masks that can take place outside, the majority of the time they will, if there's weather, of course, we have to make a change. And then windows in the classrooms will be opened as much as possible for some airflow. Same as Kim said, we have the proper hand washing techniques to be posted and taught, and we will, we will teach that and review that during our zero hour time at the middle school. Lunchtime will take place in the cafeteria. We have counted out the space and counted out the numbers, and if needed, we're hoping to be able to use some classrooms and additional space, spaces for lunchtime. Activity time, which is connected to our lunchtime. Our goal at first, of course, is to be outside as much as possible, and if weather permits, we have looked at the space in our big gym on the bleachers and are going to place Xs that are six feet apart where students will be able to sit at a, at a location or even if the space allows, they could walk laps around the gym but alone. And they do use their phones during that time, so that's the time that they could be just sitting on their phone or listening to music. In our office, the same thing, plexiglass barriers will be placed in the main office. Everyone entering the office will sanitize, wear a mask, and will have a log for signing in and out for any visitors that do come in. And the same thing that district wide will be working closely with the health department regarding any illness with COVID-19 symptoms, and, and we will have a quarantine area also at the middle school.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
With middle schoolers being slightly more rebellious than, say, kindergartners, questioning authority, I'm curious as to how we're going to handle disciplinary action for not following the additional rules related to COVID.
So I think, I think that's a great question, but I do think we have things in place at the middle school already, like positive, our positive behavior supports that we do use for our students who are misbehaving at times. So I do think that there can be positive behavior supports put into place for students who are choosing not to wear masks, but I do also think that we have to be, we do have to take this very seriously, and if our students and parents are requesting for the students to be face to face, they do need to wear the masks and follow the rules. So I do think that at the middle school, we'll need to take a hard stance with that and everybody be on the same page and holding the kids accountable. So we do have the online option, so that might be something that we have to even discuss with parents in a parent meeting, that if their students are not following the, you know, COVID rules or expectations, you know, we might even have to suggest that they, you know, are in the Oilers online versus face to face if they're unable to, to follow the safety part, especially with, I mean, the executive order from the governor, I mean, everyone does have to have the masks on. So it's just important that we continue to follow those expectations in the classroom and school also.
Thank you.
Darby, I have two questions. One is, so the middle school already is broken into grade cohorts. So in general, every grade level, six, seven, and eight, have two separate cohorts within each one of those grades. So are we continuing with that model and are those cohearted students all the ones kind of be in their own space and in all their own area?
Yeah, so we have our teams at the middle school, so we will continue our teams, we have two per grade level, and so, and they're also in their areas, and that's one part of that kind of staggering passing time that we're kind of thinking about and working on would be certain areas moving versus maybe by grade level. So we would be able to have not as many on each floor as well as, while they're moving for passing time. So we will continue teaming, yes.
My other question is, can you share who else was on the team with you that helped develop these recommendations?
So we, we had admin, of course, for our, our major planning, and I had three teachers review kind of a plan just in their, my reviewers for like grammar and those types of pieces. And then I also had three of the MPEA members who were shared this plan at the beginning of this, or beginning of last week or mid last week, and worked on discussing some questions and suggestions with them as well.
My last question is, so there's been these conversations about multiple days or alternating days of cohorts, you know, and since the middle school already has the two cohorts per grade level, was there, what was there any, any conversation regarding splitting the middle school into an A school and a B school, let's call it for ease of conversation, to have fewer students? There's about 400 students in the school, the density is not quite as high as the high school, but I didn't know if there was any conversation regarding that.
So I think that once the RESD kind of put out the direction that we're heading, I think the hybrid model conversation really happened, and it didn't happen at the middle school for sure. So our plan was to plan that virtual instruction for Euler Online and to plan the face to face and put all the guidelines in place that the roadmap suggests for us. So we did not have a hybrid conversation at the middle school.
Does your team feel confident in the structure that you have with the recommendations that you've shown tonight?
I, I would say that, I mean, thinking about the MPEA members that I had review the plan, and we've had conversations with MPEA just during our bargaining conversations. And I think that for the most part, we have a couple areas that we're still kind of tweaking and having a conversation real soon here about, but for the most part of everything that I presented here, I believe that putting aside maybe their beliefs or thoughts on if we should return or not, I think they would say that we're putting safety precautions into place as well as we can, meeting the guidelines of the roadmap.
Thank you, Darby.
You're welcome.
Darby, I have a quick question. Oh, sorry. Darby, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Amy.
Oh, sorry. Regarding like electives, like band and choir, I was just wondering if there were any kind of protective or any type of situations that you've had to think more about those options, or if they're even going to be kind of offered at, at this stage?
So those are two that I have big question marks next to on my plan, so choir and band. But I think that we're going to need to look at both of those classes a little, a little bit different in what we can do that might not include actually playing an instrument or actually singing, but Linda, she'll say this during her Oilers Online thing, but she always says like maybe they're actually studying some music or studying like Hamilton or doing some work where they're digging a little deeper into maybe some bigger things than just actually playing the instruments or singing. So those were a couple ideas that Linda puts out there, but I do think as a music team, they're very creative, and I think that they could alter their lessons as needed to, again, follow those guidelines. But we are planning on having them, yes, at this time.
Okay, thanks.
And Tim, I just wanted to clarify for you in regards to the question about the RESD letter. That is not a letter that came from the RESD down to the district. In fact, after our team working a few different times looking at a hybrid plan versus a five day face to face plan, our district team thought, okay, we can do a five day face to face plan and we can offer an Oilers Online option. I then attended a meeting where all of the RESD superintendents were represented. We all shared our plans. We all shared our plans and found that we were all doing the very same thing. From that conversation, we made the decision to put out that letter. So I don't, if anyone has responsibility for that letter being sent, it lies solely on my shoulders. That was something that we thought it was good to show solidarity as we move forward in making plans. But that letter came after our team was already heavily invested in planning the two options of a return to in-person learning and a virtual learning option.
Does any other board members have any questions regarding the middle school overview from Darby?
Okay, then we'll go on to the high school overview with John.
Okay, thank you. Ours is similar to some of the things you've heard from Kim and Darby already. One of the first lines of defense that we have is wearing masks. And said that's going to be required for both students and staff at all times unless they're eating, you know, breakfast or lunch. As far as the morning arrival, we are going to move our opening time, our building usually is open at, you know, early in the morning. But we're going to have a 7:30 drop-off time, you know, that corresponds with the later bus arrival time also to limit the amount of time before the start of classes. And so kids will come in, have a sanitizing station. They'll have the cafeteria option for breakfast. And then also moving to their lockers and eventually to the classroom during that limited morning arrival time. As far as breakfast, it'll be similar to lunch where we have spacing. Unfortunately, not as many of our kids eat breakfast, like I said, as we would like them to at school. And so on all of our meals, like I said, we're going to have the cafeteria, you know, marked off for social distancing. Our building has always used, just about the entire building for lunches anyways. We have tables out in the hallway. We have table, you know, kids stretch down the hallway. We're just going to mandate social distancing to try to accommodate the larger groups. We also are looking at possibly expanding the number of lunches that we currently offer in there. In the classroom, like I said, upon entering, students will sanitize with hand sanitizer. And like I said, they'll be cleaned each classroom, you know, after each class period ends. We're looking at reducing our passing time from seven minutes down to five minutes. With that extra two minutes, hopefully can go back into being used in the classroom for sanitizing to minimize the loss of instructional use during that time. As far as movement throughout our building, we have pods for many of the instructional areas. Those are going to be one-way movement so that kids will circle around the pods in a single direction so we're not getting crossing things and try to keep distancing. In our main hallways, we'll have each side marked off for directional, two-way directional traffic, but also trying to keep social distancing as they move through there. All of our offices will be like similar to the other ones. And that includes the Career Tech Center, the Counseling Office, and both the Principals and Assistant Principal, you know, offices will have Plexiglass. And like I said, one of the things that will happen is we are going to limit visitors to essential visitors only. And those ones will go through a strict screening protocol, including temperature checks as they go through to try to limit the amount of outside interaction with our students. All of our areas, media centers, computer labs, and classrooms will all be disinfected after every class period. Our staff will go through self-checks every morning before coming to work and strongly encourage to not come if they are showing any COVID symptoms. We do have quarantine areas in our building. For any of our students or staff that becomes sick with symptoms of COVID, we will be delivering instruction through both the face-to-face, but also have the online option, similar to what Darby said. You know, it's just going to have to be all hands on deck with the staff in terms of enforcing our first line of defense, which are the masks. And like I said, hoping that if somebody has a, you know, problem with the mask, the online option would be available. All of our extracurricular activities would be available even to the students who go on the Oilers Online. One of the big changes will be after-school where we've generally allowed students who were waiting for a practice to happen now will not be allowed to wait on school grounds for that. So that may, that will be a difference from previous years. And most of the other stuff in terms of cleaning, Josh will get to. Busing, we'll also talk about counseling services, not only for our social-emotional, but also academic face-to-face students to go through. Any questions?
John, could you just repeat that last little bit? You started to break up and we didn't get everything that you said.
Okay, sorry. All of our counseling services, whether it be our social-emotional counseling or our academic counseling, will be available whether a student is in face-to-face learning or Oilers Online learning.
Does any board member have any questions?
Yeah, are we, we're screening guests as they come in, temperature checking. Are we temperature checking students or staff on a, as they come in?
If requested, but not on a, you know, every student as they come in or every staff member, just if requested.
So we're asking, Sheila, we're asking every staff member to complete a daily screening. It'll be via QR code so they scan that and complete a screening every day. And we're asking our parents to help us screen our students every day.
And how so? How are you screening?
We're asking them the required questions from the Health Department and screening their temperatures.
Are there any other questions? John, I have a couple of questions. Was there any conversation regarding this cohort concept where, for example, taking each pod, which is currently a subject matter, and breaking them into a grade and having each subject area in general for each one of those grade levels to be in the separate pods and then isolating the different pods, knowing that some of the classes you can't, like sciences and stuff where they have special rooms. But was there any conversations about breaking the high schools into A and B, an A and B school, for example?
Well, we looked at a lot of different ways in terms of having cohorts where possibly the teachers switch. It's very difficult because kids are at all different, you know, you might be a ninth grader in algebra, algebra II or geometry, you know, depending on your pathway. Kids are switching every single hour with different classes. So it's not quite the same as like a grade level as they go through because they, in any given time, there's ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders all in the same class for many of our classes. It's difficult to that. We did look at it, but didn't have a way to do that form of, you know, changing classes.
The other question is, could you also share, there was a, as we already heard earlier tonight, a committee that helps support the decision of the high school. Could you share some of the people that were on that?
Sure. We set about, put together a large committee. That was mostly our administrators, care pros and support staff, and then also most of our department coordinators that we had. So on ours was myself, Jeff Platy, and Mary Kay Volks from the administration. From the support staff, we had Eric Roman and Jackie Beltnick. And then from our teaching staff, which also included many of our department coordinators, Sue Heft, Matt Tatum, Alexia Torres, Stephanie Sedler, Wendy Apple, Lisa Davis, Amanda Boyle from Counseling, Mindy Wishmeyer, Trace Lundford, Jason Brown, and Kim O'Boyle. And then each of the department coordinators would, as we'd meet, would go back to their departments, asking for suggestions and, you know, any recommendations. And then when we meet again, they would bring those back. So we hope to involve, you know, all of our staff that wanted to be involved.
Another question I have is, so there's a lot of extracurricular and co-curricular activities at the high school, athletics, music, theater, BPA, the list goes on and on. What's, is there any conversation about will those still be occurring? Are they going to follow any different special kind of rulings? We know that the high school athletic program has Michigan High School Athletic Association, and they're having some rules and developing some mechanisms for athletics. But could you address some of these other areas that are very valuable at the high school and what the thought is around some of those?
I know the biggest one we were looking at is anything around music. Matt Tatum has been putting together plans for what band camp would look like. John Clack has been looking at what it would look like for a play, you know, possibly offering that off-campus. I know Matt has a plan for in the classroom. One of the things we are looking at is not offering choir in the first trimester just because that's one we haven't figured out yet. Some of the other ones, like I said, we'll have to, I mean, the meetings would have to be similar to a classroom setting. And then any of the extracurricular activities. Of course, athletics would follow the MHSA recommendations and rules. But we haven't got into all of the specifics of every club. We offer a lot of clubs at the high school. So we'd have to look at each one of those individually.
One last question is, much like what John Zirkwisch asked earlier about the middle school and behavior and the mechanisms for enforcement of some of these, we know high schoolers like to fight everything that adults often put before them. Is there any conversation on helping them better understand the importance and/or what are consequences? What is, what is that conversation going to look like with the high school students?
Specifically towards masks, is that what you're asking?
In general, that seems to be that and some of these basic rules, you know, socializing distance and which most kids go to high school because for socialization. And so, you know, how are you going to build that? Because I know that we have hall monitors who help enforce some of these things. So I just want a better understanding of that process and what that could potentially look like.
I think we're going to, like I said, I mean, it's just going to have to be a strict policy that's followed by every, you know, by the administration, teaching staff, and our hall monitors to make sure and, you know, teach the students why the importance of wearing the mask and why it is. And then having discussions with parents about, you know, helping us work together to keep our students safe.
Thank you, John. Does any other board member have any conversations regarding the presentation that John just said about the high school overview?
Will there be any, is there going to be any consideration as to how you're going to manage the parking lot area before and after-school? I know that's sometimes a troublesome spot and there's a lot of collection of children in there.
We haven't got that specifically. We had looked at, I mean, we have cameras on all of our parking lots. So I think what we'll probably do is just right away, make sure we're out in the, have a presence out in the parking lot, making sure students are leaving our facilities before and, you know, after-school, either coming in or leaving the parking lot.
Thank you.
One other question. Do you know how many of your staff would be at high risk or have comorbidities that would make them even more? And are you making some kind of plans for them?
We've talked with many of our staff that are concerned and tried to offer, you know, being able to teach online as one of their options. I don't know if we have a way to have a staff member completely online right now. But we would definitely try to look at, you know, safety precautions in the classroom and any other things that they needed.
So also, Sheila, our staff members will have outreach from our Human Resources Department so that we can be made aware of any extenuating circumstances and offer to support them in any way possible.
It's more of a general question, probably more towards Jen. Have we worked with our provider for substitute teachers looking at the expectation that there's a potential to need substantially more substitute teachers, given the conditions that we're, or the conditions we're going to use for evaluating somebody's ability to be in the building?
Yeah, they are very well aware of the heightened need for substitute teachers. So we've had those conversations earlier this summer. I've not talked with them since the return-to-school roadmap came out. But we have, that is an area of concern. We have been short of substitute teachers for the last several years. And I anticipate that it will be worse this year than it has been previously. So we have been in contact with them. But I don't, I don't know that they have a great plan in place except they're all aware of the issue and are really working to recruit additional subs and also to make the process for signing up to be a sub an easier process.
Thank you.
So we can move on to our next area of conversation, which is Gresham Isabella Technical Education Center. And Mary Kay, thank you, Mary Kay.
Thank you for having me tonight. So yes, lots of considerations, particularly as we plan forward with a CTE perspective and nine Sunding schools coming to us. Here recently, Jen and I were part of a participation of all of the RESD superintendents to discuss the CTE approach and CTE programming full. From that meeting, we all, as you know, we all are following the RESD approach, which is all the districts are going to be face-to-face five days a week. We are allowing students to choose, or excuse me, students that choose the optional option at their home school, they will be allowed to school ten face-to-face if they wish to do so. We allow students to participate in any extracurricular CTSOs. That is career technical student organizations. That is a very large group of the experience with our students. I've looked at, there are just as examples, BPA, MITES, that's our Michigan Technical, our HOSA, that's our student groups, ProStar, which would be our culinary groups, and our school broadcasting program, that's our digital media groups. We have many more than that, but just to list a few, we will allow those students to participate with all the same safety precautions as they would have in the school day. We will be respecting the methods that each Sunding school district uses to screen their students. And I know that's going to be varied, depending on the size. One of the smaller schools, I think, are going to try to take temperatures. Some of the larger ones, perhaps not. But we will be accept, we will accept whatever means they are going to screen their students. The district cleaning and our preparedness plan that you have heard many components already are just repeated. And Josh will also talk about some of the cleanliness and sanitizing that we will go through. But we also will require masks by all. As the superintendents were talking, everybody is going to supply their students with some mask or at least a mask. And we will also have extra masks available if they forget them or whatever, lose them. They get soiled, whatever the case may be. We are looking at our seating and classrooms are arranged to socially distance as much as possible. And in some of our cases, that means that we may have to pull our classrooms into our labs and not be in the classroom. We're looking at perhaps maybe doing half of the class in the lab, the other half in the classroom, and maybe doing a tag team of sorts. You'll be in the classroom, maybe watching this tutorial as some of the other kids are out in the labs and then do the flip and the flop. Hand sanitizing, we're going to have stations both as you enter the building and in each classroom. And of course, as my colleagues have said prior, proper hand washing techniques and expectations taught and posted. And disinfecting between individual use of tools, equipment, computers. It's very hands-on. So we do have to think of these things and not share any material. So we do have to think of these things and not share any materials whatsoever. Our hallways will also be marked for one flow direction, and at this point, we're planning to, as you enter the front of our building, that it will be in a south, you will go south or to the right as you enter the front doors. Already kind of scheduled in place is our staggered arrivals and dismissals as each area school comes to us at different times. And of course, to get back to their home schools, they exit at different times. So we already are an inherent staggered schedule as it is. So that will be. We also will continue our social emotional support as well as career services for, with our CTE school counselor for any students that need some extra help or just everyday help that we've always given. Questions have come, you know, holding kids accountable. And as I've said a long, long time, that it's a privilege to come to CTE. And if you choose to come, you know, these are the rules, whether it's safety in the classroom, even pre-COVID. So, you know, now we have more safety things to look at and to consider. And if you're going to come and participate, then I feel it is, I need to hold them accountable. They have to follow the safety, they have to wear a mask. And if they don't, they can go to their sending school and go online. I think it's important to keep everybody safe. Unless, of course, they have a valid health reason why they can't wear a mask, but I feel it's, I need to make that loud and clear day one. Are there any questions for me?
Mary Kay, I have a question. In some of the comments earlier, there was this question brought up about, you know, broadening out our footprint of students coming in and out of the school with the CTE, since we are the receiving district of other districts, which is the actual model and the such a big success of the CTE GI Tech Center. But was there any conversation about sealing off the staff and the students in the GI Tech from the rest of the main body of the high school and not allowing anyone to cross over during the day? Or there's a school store, now closing the school store for now to limit the, any kind of crossover. Most of the GI Tech's kind of in one end of the building, and most of the high schools kind of in the other end of the building. But was there conversations about sealing the two off and having checks when they go from the high school into the building, into GI Tech or vice versa, of help checks, as if they were coming in and out of a separate building?
There was a little bit of discussion about that. We do try to keep area students or any CTE students on our side of the building. Granted, you know, have there been some that have wandered in the past? Of course, there have been, but we need to keep them on our side, definitely. When we were in our conversation, Jen and I and all the other supes, we were talking about that, that, you know, like you said, Tim, everybody is an area student on my end of the building. You know, even Mount Pleasant kids have to come to my end. And to health check them, conversation was made about that, most definitely. School store and restaurant, I think we will not be open in the beginning. That's just too much concern and too much out there. We need, we need to have some more conversation regarding that before we open them up like they have been. We had talked about, perhaps with apparel and things like that, there certainly could be orders placed, and we could do some deliveries of apparel. There could be orders placed at the restaurant, so there could possibly be deliveries for food. But right now, we have to put some more things in place before I feel comfortable opening up those two. Not, not the classroom themselves, but the extra services they provide.
Provide. And then what is the, the protocols that the buses are using for the transport of those students to Mount Pleasant? Is it same as we've heard already to some extent that there's decontamination and everything?
Yes. What, what, Jen, you can clarify me if I'm incorrect, but all of them have their own and very similar, even some of the same equipment that they're using to sterilize or sanitize their buses. Did you get that as well, Jennifer, when we were there? Yeah.
All the districts that send students our way, if they're using common district transportation, we'll be sanitizing their buses. They use the same sort of equipment that Josh will be talking about in our district. There are some students that do drive on their own, and so we will make sure that they are completing the screening before they arrive as well. Not everyone rides a bus to CTE.
Any other questions for Mary Kay? Thank you, Mary Kay.
Thank you.
So next, we'll invite Josh to talk about the general overview of safety and cleaning procedures. Thank you, Josh.
Yep. Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Josh Rhodes, Director of Facilities here for Mount Pleasant Schools. I'm going to just kind of go over a general safety and cleaning overview. I know there's a lot of questions. This is a big area of concern. So I'll kind of go over my spiel that kind of just falls in line with the governor's roadmap. And then whatever questions you guys have, you know, I'll do my best to answer them. First things first, I guess, when it comes to masks, we will be supplying three, three-ply washable cloth masks to all staff and students. I already have disposable masks for the days that students soil them, they get lost, forgotten. So we will have tons of spares. Buses, buses will have boxes of spares for students that, you know, go to get on the bus and forget, you know, and they've forgotten them. There's been areas of concern with like DK through two, being able to teach with clear masks. So I have a limited supply, but still, you know, still a few hundred masks coming that have clear, clear mouth areas for, you know, for those concerns. I have enough face, face shields in stock for all staff, if that helps, helps anyone feel better. We will be installing plexiglass dividers in front of all the secretaries and main offices. Not even, not even recommended for the governor's stuff, but we're kind of trying to go a little above and beyond. I've kind of been chatting with other facility directors of districts our size. And we're kind, I mean, we're, we're doing our best and we're kind of, I mean, I feel like we're doing pretty well compared to a lot of districts out there. When it comes to health assessments, we are asking the staff to do it daily. They'll sign off on it. I think the logistics of that are still kind of up in the air, whether it be like a power school thing or something like that. But we will be responsible for doing temperature checks and self-assessments. When it came to the students, I think we were advised to where we cannot check every student's temperatures legally. Jen might be able to elaborate a little more on that. I know some people wanted to see that, but that isn't a thing, I guess, we're, you know, we shouldn't be doing or we've been advised not to do.
So just, just to clarify on that area, the question has been elevated to the governor's office. Schools do not explicitly have the right to take a student's temperature just for entering the building. And so Trune Law Firm has elevated that question for additional information to the governor's office. So I do understand that there are many schools in the state of Michigan that do plan to scan every student's temperature as they walk in. And so we're waiting for additional guidance and information on that area from Trune.
Okay. That being said, we are supplying medical-grade infrared thermometers to all main offices. That way, if someone does become ill or not feeling well, we can check their temperature. Every building will have their own designated quarantine zone, as you've heard all the other administrators say. Social distancing, we are going to strategically mark, like everyone said, mark out floors, one direction, you know, directional arrows, you know, to try to maintain that six-foot social distancing the best we can. I don't know if you want to skip your next one, Jen. We are installing hand sanitizer stations at all main entrances. We are in, or providing hand sanitizer, pump bottles to every room in the district. Bulk disinfectant wipes, basically a bulk version of a Clorox wipe, will literally go in every classroom. Wiping down, as per the governor's roadmap, wiping down desks in between class as classes switches. All of that, we are, we will be providing training. Our custodial company is trying to kind of whip up a training video for all of our staff to watch. I'll be supplying the necessary PPE for that, masks, face shield, and gloves. We're hoping we can kind of come up with an arrangement with teachers or, I guess, whoever that, the logistics of that are still kind of up in the air also. But we will have everything in place to be able to disinfect classrooms several times throughout the day. As of now, I have already purchased two Clorox 360 electrostatic disinfecting machines. There's a lot of literature out there, and they're medical grade, a lot of hospitals use them. If you guys are interested, I would just YouTube some videos. There's, like I said, there's a ton of literature. I found the light bulb demo video kind of appealing. There's a lot of districts out there that are doing pump sprayers and this and that, and it breaks it down. And I mean, you know, it, it shows them spraying something, and it just wraps and just engulfs the objects at which it sprays, completely disinfects them within a one-minute time. So I bought a couple of those. Those, along with, I bought backpack electrostatic sprayers, so that will be floating all of our playgrounds. That'll be disinfecting playgrounds. And then once they disinfect that playground, they will, they will roll into the elementary. GRBS, our custodial company, is supplying us with another Clorox 360 machine. So we, a lot of the hybrid models, yes, they, they're taking off a Wednesday to disinfect. We will be disinfecting nonstop, 24/7 on afternoon shift. GRBS is hiring more day staff to hit touchpoints, bathrooms, door handles, all of that to keep up with the, you know, the day task of that. We are hiring even more afternoon staff, and they will, some of them will specifically be running disinfecting machines all day, every day. Every, every building will get touched multiple times a week with this machine. It is, it's like, I, I'm optimistic about it. That being said, our custodial company, Grand Rapids, they are, like I said, they're adding staff. Afternoons, nights, days, I mean, we're going to do the best we can. All the disinfectants we're using are EPA-approved for emergency varicose pathogen claim against SARS-CoV-2. So it's, so it's approved, it's, it's supposed to work. We are adding hand washing, coffee etiquette, social distancing signage everywhere. When students walk in, they'll be bombarded with signage just to try to keep, you know, try to make it just second nature to keep, you know, to keep your distance. Hey, when you walk in, all of our sanitizing stations are touchless. You just put your hand in there, puts a squirt in your hand, disinfect, keep your mask on, and, and go about your business. Kathy Schaefer, the Director of Transportation, she also has a, an electrostatic machine. She's buying to disinfect buses. She's also supplying them with, obviously, the mask that I already said. They'll all have hand sanitizer, and they will all have sanitizing wipes to disinfect often. Um, we're down here. So when it comes to fresh air intake, obviously, like every other district that's, that's kind of trying to return to face-to-face, we're going to encourage opening windows. I am cranking up the fresh air intake on as many of our HVAC systems as we can, which will, it's a little less efficient, but we will be bringing in as much fresh air as we can. We are changing to a higher MERV-rated filter, which is just kind of up the filtration. It doesn't necessarily say it, you know, it helps with the COVID stuff, but it helps with everything else, whether it be allergies or anything like that. It's just, it's just better all the way around. And yeah, drinking fountains, that's been a huge concern. Obviously, you can't lean your mouth over, you know, over drinking fountains, so we're shutting all bubblers down. Most of the district is shut down as of now. Bottle fillers will still be active, so you can still get fresh water, so we'll have fresh wa, fresh, clean, filtered water available. That being said, I kind of went through it pretty quick, but I guess, is there any questions? Or what are your questions?
Josh, I have a question. Eight hundred school districts in Michigan and four thousand, hundred thousand, whatever in the country, all buy the exact same thing, the exact same mask, the exact same everything. Is it looking like we will actually get these materials in?
Um, so Jen can attest to this. I kind of jumped on this a long time ago in anticipation of this. I already have, I already have 90% of it. And a lot of this stuff, the Clorox 360s, all that stuff was a 12- to 16-week lead time. I ordered them months ago. I already have a couple of them sitting at our shop. So yeah, I already have, I already have all the disposable masks, face shields, gloves, all of our typical paper consumables. Yeah, I ordered all this stuff a long time ago in anticipation of this, knowing that whether we open or not, you know, that's neither, you know, neither here nor there, you know, based off opinion, we will use this stuff, whether it's high flu numbers. You know, it was on Jen and our, you know, our radar last spring, when our flu numbers were getting high, that I wanted to purchase these machines anyways, just to, just to combat that, because we only had, they're, I mean, they're rather expensive, and we only had one that our custodial company would give us. So it was on our radar anyways. So yeah, but yeah, we'll be, we're, we're sitting good as far as actually having it here. A lot of other districts, I see on, you know, I see a lot of other districts that are just now getting around to it, and I think they're, they're going to be in for a surprise, I think.
You know, it is interesting. So many of these things that we're talking about do remind me of every, you know, wintertime when influenza A, influenza B, SARS, cracks up in our school district, and we're taking accounting of kids' health every day to make sure that we have enough students in track and working with the health department. So it's kind of interesting that, you know, some people think these are completely new to the school district, but we've been doing these for decades, following these protocols and having a relationship with the health department, and sanitizing. I mean, even sanitizing more specific for like preschool and small children in the kindergarten who tend to be, right? So we've developed mechanisms. But can you talk a little bit more about, there's some new people who haven't had to do all of that, bus drivers and some aides have not had to do that sanitizing experience, I mean, keeping their hands clean at all times. What is the training going to look like for them so they feel comfortable in knowing that what they're doing is what's right and what's best for the students?
So like Jen can probably attest to the actual hand washing, but we're trying, our GRBS is trying to come up with a good training video, the videos that they use to train their staff when it comes to actually the disinfecting aspect, hand washing. I mean, they're, you know, we, we've looked at Safe Schools. Safe Schools has a lot of, you know, a lot of literature and a lot of good videos when it comes to training and stuff like that. So, yeah.
When we, when we look at training and we look at the disinfecting that has to happen, know that much of this has to be negotiated with our bargain groups. And then from that process, we'll make sure that they have all the appropriate training, whether that be through training models supplied to us through GRBS or SETSEG, which does all of our Safe Schools training now. But we'll make sure that all of our employees know exactly what they need to do to be able to disinfect their area and keep themselves safe. And then I think bringing on the additional day staff through Grand Rapids Building Services, Josh sort of highlighted that, but that's huge to be able to have folks that are solely concentrating on disinfecting touchpoints in those key areas will really keep our building safe for the long haul.
A little bit, I mean, a little of this responsibility is going to land on teachers and students. When, you know, hand sanitizers or be soap, you know, soap fillers, I just think, see someone commented on that. If we don't know necessarily they need filled in the middle of the day, they don't typically get addressed till the end of the day. So it's like, if you run out of sanitizer or, you know, paper towel, anything like that, like, you know, people kind of need to, you know, you need to communicate and let, you know, let someone know that we can get it filled as soon as possible. Those things you run out, obviously, at random times, some entrances are crazy busy, so they're, you know, they're going to be getting, getting used more than others. So hopefully, the communication can be there, and GRBS is, you know, they've committed to do whatever they can to try to, you know, to try to keep everything in stock and keep everything as clean as possible.
Does any other board members have any questions?
It's like John does.
I do. Sorry. I, I question whether we actually have enough time for the level of training that's required for staff and faculty. GRBS has their own program, obviously, before we start, what is it, August 5th, with the balanced calendar?
Yep. When it come, I mean, when it comes to training staff, I'll be honest, I can teach, you know, I can show a teacher how to effectively disinfect a classroom in five minutes. I can even whip them up a little spreadsheet on the touchpoints to hit, because a lot of people do, do forget the random touchpoints, the door handles, the light switches, you know, faucets. I mean, a lot of people do forget those. I can do, you know, like a little, you know, a little checklist. We can put it on their whiteboard. That way, if it is negotiated to where they will help, help with that, I already, I'll, you know, their PPE will be sitting there, their disinfecting wipes will be sitting there. They just run down that checklist real quick, real quick, and it'll just, you know, hopefully be smoothed up.
I think one of the things with, when we think about this plan and when we look at it, and one of the big reasons why we wanted to have this meeting with you all tonight to work through this is if we are going to start the balanced calendar program, we're starting about talking, we're talking about starting six classrooms. So that gives us the opportunity, and Diane will talk about this in a minute, but this gives us an opportunity for a soft start. So when you talk about the timing issues and that sort of thing, we can start that process with six sections and make sure that we are prepared for our entire buildings to come back.
Josh, I have one other question. A little bit on side. John, is that you? Go ahead.
I just had one other question, Josh. It sounds like you were very, very proactive in preparing. Are there any things that you weren't able to procure that, that you wish you could have or that we could potentially help with?
To be honest, I, like I said, I started this, this process a long time ago. And everything I wanted to procure, you know, the Clorox 360 was the big one. And that is literally the best disinfectant machine on the market. And that was, like I said, that was a 16 week lead time. I already have them coming. So it's like, that was the only thing that I was, I was kind of freaking out about that I really, really wanted. And I wanted it due to, due to last, last year's flu numbers anyways. And, and we got them. So I mean, everything else is, everything else is walk in the park. And the only thing, honestly, the only thing I'm waiting right now for is our washable cloth masks to come in. They're supposed to be in by the time school starts, but I have, I mean, I have, you know, 10, 12,000 disposable masks, which can easily get us to that point. So no, we're sitting pretty good as far as actually having the inventory.
Thank you.
And I know disinfecting was huge and that was kind of your question there. When it came to training and that, these machines are incredible. When you spray a desk, I mean, there's, you know, there's videos and YouTube videos. I mean, it's up underneath. It is everywhere. And every building will be getting hit multiple times with, with these machines. So. I think it's, I think it's going to be our best, our best approach. And I think, I think it's going to be highly effective. Trying to stay positive.
Josh, my question is to you, but it may be to Jen to answer. I don't know quite the answer to that. But, um, we just went through a rather rigorous budget reorganization and cutting. One of the big reasons that we were being so strapped is the expense of everything that you've just been going through. Do you have any estimates of what this cost is? And then Jen, could you address on, is there funds going to be able to cover all of this expense?
Do you want to go first, Jen?
No, you go ahead.
So yes, they were substantial costs. They were substantial and to just, the kicker was the expensive part were, were pieces that I wanted to buy anyways due to, due to our flu numbers. And they were pieces we should have had, like the Clorox 360s. Everything else I shopped around. I found the best deals on every single thing that I, that I could find. I mean, I have quotes coming out of my ears, but I found the best deals on everything. Granted, it's still expensive. We created a separate account for all of these COVID related expenses. And we're hoping that, you know, at some point we can get some, you know, get some better reimbursement or, you know, what have you to kind of cover some of these costs.
So, and I guess.
Do I have any idea what the cost is?
In general?
Um, Ginger could probably be more accurate with that. I've just been processing the POs, but I can honestly say they're, I mean, they were substantial, but I mean, you're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, but you're, I mean, you are talking tens of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, I don't have that figure right in front of me right now, but we did put a line item in the budget right now for a couple hundred thousand dollars to make sure we just had enough to get through. But like Josh mentioned, we are getting a lot of state and federal funding that's very specifically COVID related. Like the CARES Act, the 586,000 that we do currently have in the 2021 budget that covers this type of expenditure. So while right now we're, we're have it all set up in one line item so we can keep track of it in one very specific spot that will be moved into those state and federal grants that we are receiving that are very specifically to be spent on COVID related expenses.
So I think you all probably remember about a month or six weeks ago, I shared with you a graphic that showed estimated expenses for a school of, a school district of our size to reopen. And the estimated expenses were right around $1.7 million. And that included additional staff, additional transportation and all those kinds of things. So we know that it is expensive and we certainly haven't spent anywhere near that. But we know that there will be significant expenses for our buildings to keep them clean and keep them safe. So whether we're able to open when we want to, when school starts or if it's later down the road, at some point I'm hopeful that we will move into phase four and phase five where it will be safe to open our schools and to have our students return. So these purchases I believe are prudent and important.
Thank you. Thank you both. Does anyone else have any questions for Josh? On to the next topic.
Okay, I will ask, actually have Ginger stay with us and she'll talk about our lunch overview and I will pull up this document, Ginger.
Thank you. Yeah, our principals discussed earlier tonight what will be expected of our students, especially as far as sanitizing as they enter cafeterias, wearing masks. They're seated and eating. I wanted to touch a little bit on the actual food service process and different items that I know there will be questions on. All cafeterias and classrooms and any eating spaces that will be used throughout the buildings will be sanitized before and after each use. All eating areas will also be marked for social distancing. Food service staff will always be wearing a face mask and or shields and gloves. There will be no self-service. This means there will be no open salad bars, no grabbing grilled fruit, et cetera. All meals will be served by food service staff directly to the student. All meals will be served in covered containers. So we will not have any open trays of food being carried around. And there will be no common touch areas. The food service staff will be entering student IDs into the system. So the students don't even have to type in their numbers or swipe their cards as they're going through the line. For the elementary breakfast in the classroom, as usual, we've been doing that for several years now. Through that breakfast in the classroom system, there is a classroom roster that a staff member fills out as far as who in their classroom will be eating breakfast that day. We're going to be utilizing that same type of roster for lunch. So that's the only touch point as far as roster. We will not be using cards this coming year. Lunch, some will be in the classroom as Kim had mentioned earlier, and the others will be staggered in social distance in the cafeteria. We are still serving very fresh, hot and cold options. They're just now served in a closed container instead of an open tray. I know the food service staff is excited to be back and to serve our students. Just last week they were in testing out new menu items and sounded amazing, the different items that they were working on cooking. So we will not be going to a prepackaged cold lunch for everybody. We're still very adamant about wanting our students to have nice, fresh, quality, hot and or cold food options. For the secondary, the breakfast will be in the, in the cafeteria as discussed earlier by both Darby and John. They will, seating areas will be marked for social distancing. Multiple lunch areas will be created in those buildings and marked for social distancing. Again, the cafeteria will be utilized if needed. The media center, the gym, the classrooms will also be utilized. Something new for this coming school year that we're very excited about is that mobile ordering will be available and highly recommended to be used for our secondary students. They can place a breakfast and or lunch order online the day before or the morning of if it's for lunch. There wouldn't be enough time to place a breakfast order the morning of. That student will have all options available online to select that will be open to any student in the building. And there will be one specific area for students to pick up their lunches. So they just walk up, tell the staff member their last name. The staff hands them their closed container of hot, fresh food. They walk to the cashier, tell them their student ID number and the cashier types in the number. So the only touch point that the student has is their own container of food. And then they can go into the socially marked or marked for social distance cafeteria and/or classrooms to eat. That's really exciting for us to offer. One thing that's not on here that I did want to point out that there will be lunch and breakfast options available for any Euler online participants too. We don't have that 100% worked out, but it could easily look like what we're doing right now for our summer food service program. There could be a location that parents or students could drive through and pick up their meals, or there's a possibility of maybe bus routes as we did at the very beginning of quarantine. Those details still need to be hammered out, but those students selecting the online option will definitely still be offered food while they go through the school year. No, I kind of ran through that quickly. I'm willing to take any questions and try to answer them the best I can.
Any board member have a question? One other question is the face shields. So they're always required to wear a mask and then they would wear a face shield on top of the mask? Is that how that would work?
That's something we need clarification on. I know, again, it's been discussed at several meetings, if face shields are allowable as replacement for a mask, just in addition to.
They are not allowed for us. We have, it has to be in supplement too. So you have to wear them both for our staff. So. I'm assuming they would be the same mask. And then if you opt for the face shield, you, you have to do both. So.
So yeah, that's definitely something we'll work closely with our food service company, SFB.
Any other questions for Ginger? Just a little heads up for all the board members. Make sure you have power to your computers. We've been on for quite a while and some of the computers are starting to run out of electricity. So Jen, why don't we go on to the next topic?
Thank you.
So our next topic is our Oilers online overview and we'll have Linda share that with everyone.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, last year we kind of had new territory as we went to full online instruction in March. And we've talked before how our March plan was somewhat more of a crisis plan than a specific learning, learning plan as our teacher started on that virtual journey, sort of spur of the moment on a Friday in March. As we wrapped up the school year, we identified before we even left in June that we would establish Google Classroom as our learning management system, sort of in anticipation of what was, what was to come for this coming school year. So the learning management system that our teachers participated in as sort of an exit activity to end the school year was practicing with Google Classroom. And then from there, almost 100 of our teachers have participated in an online class called Remote Learning Essentials during a couple of weeks in July. And this is not just how to teach online, but it's just good teaching principles and some project based learning. So we're very proud of our teachers for their participation in those modules. As we prepared for our online Euler plan, we reviewed some end of the year data from our parents and we found that many of our parents wanted to have more synchronous lessons with the teacher. They wanted to be a little, wanted it to be a little more personalized and they would, wanted a schedule, yet some flexibility for their independent work time and when, when assignments were due. So kind of using that, those big takeaways, our guiding principle for our Euler online plan is to support our students' academic and emotional wellness while maintaining home and school balance and to help our students remain connected with Mount Pleasant Public Schools and with our Mount Pleasant Public School teachers. So if our parents do choose to enroll their, their child in the Oilers online option, they should expect the following. Lessons for the core content will be taught by a certified and qualified Mount Pleasant teacher. Lessons will mirror the Mount Pleasant Curriculum and Pacing Guide just as closely as possible. We have our curriculum alignment process called the Professional Studies Committee. And we do have curriculum and pacing guides for all of our various subjects and content areas that are based on the Michigan Department of Education Common Core Standards for each grade level. In theory, if a student decides to return after the first trimester, ideally they would be right on track with their peers. A one trimester at a time commitment is suggested for planning purposes. That will help us with our planning for social distancing for the students who are in school. And that will also help us lay out how many sections we need of our online learning modules. We do plan to make sure that our online experience will have increased rigor and expectations as compared to our emergency crisis plan that we kind of had to jump into unexpectedly in the spring of 2020. Oops, go to the next slide there. So continuing what our parents can expect, what our families can expect, we hope to provide both live or synchronous lessons with the teacher for core content areas and video lessons, which are asynchronous for that self-paced instructional time each day. A daily schedule will include instructional time, including some intervention time, enrichment, and time to address those IEP goals and objectives for students that have IEPs for speech, learning disabilities, all IEPs can be addressed virtually. Flexibility for when independent work time occurs. Office hours will be provided with the teacher for one-on-one conferencing and to discuss IEP needs. Daily attendance will be taken and noted in Power School. Our learning management system, which I already mentioned, will be the Google Classroom. And CSOW, which our DK2 teachers really enjoy and our parents enjoy, will be a learning component within the Google Classroom. Grading report, report cards, assessments will all be based on the Mount Pleasant grade level standards and we should be able to provide that, that high quality of learning experience with our Mount Pleasant teachers as an online Euler. We have had a virtual team studying lots of different examples and discussing schedules. And we will be able to provide probably a more visual skeleton schedule once we kind of have a feel for, you know, how many first graders across the district are interested in the, in the online Euler platform. So we do have some work to do, but we've been reading research and looking at lots of different modules. Because obviously across the state and across our country, there are lots of, lots of examples, but we have a, a great team of teachers who are not only experts on students, but experts on technology and we're continuing, continuing to refine this plan. So. I'd be happy to answer any questions and parents can continue to email if they think of something related to online Euler opportunities. I'm more than happy to continue to correspond with parents.
Linda, I have a question regarding the synchronous and asynchronous learning. For let's say a family who, their child may be home during the day with a sitter or something like that, where their schoolwork wouldn't be done until a parent came home later on in the day if they were working. Would this be something that would be allowed, especially when it comes to making attendance and things like that? Or are we looking at the children needing to be online at a specific time? Where parents should be making maybe plans with that sitter or something like that to make sure school is done during specific school hours?
I think for some, if, if some of our families really want that live instruction, we're probably going to have to really help them stick to a schedule. So some of the schedules we have looked at, for example, are an eight to eight 30 warmup and please don't compare that to our Mount Pleasant hours because that's not quite the way our littles start out, but an eight to eight 30 student classroom connection, virtually of course, and that would be live. And then eight 30 to nine 30 would be kind of that live reading instruction. Most of the schedules that we've looked at have had some of that core content of reading and math presented live in the morning. And then the afternoon can be more of an independent work time. Some video links to other enhancements and things like that. But if we want to have that live component, we'd have to tune in at a certain time. If a parent was okay with only the video part, I think some of our technology might allow that lesson to be videotaped. And so then they could watch it later. But I think if you wanted the live lesson, we'd have to commit to a schedule.
Thank you.
Linda, would that choice be, that's the parental choice, or is there a certain point where the intent would be that a student could make that choice? As to whether to go with synchronous or asynchronous?
Um, I think it may depend a lot on the classroom. You know, we've, that's one of the things that we're working with our teacher teams to see if, if a teacher is, you know, confident in teaching science and if we can arrange the video camera to be on the teacher, because having the video camera on the students would be a FERPA violation. You know, could a teacher in theory teach their great science lesson online live and also have her classroom of student observers? I don't know if I answered your question, John, but. And then at another point in the teacher's day, we could work out arrangements where there's that conferencing. And then at another point in the teacher's day, we could work out arrangements where there's that conferencing or the office hours to help those students that were. Watching the live lesson because they couldn't necessarily, I don't think the teacher could service those students with discussion and the live, the live students at the same time. And I, and I would, I would think that we would get in the habit of video, having video recordings of the live lessons as well.
Does the district's infrastructure currently need to be upgraded to support an additional level of? Video traffic or any other things? I see that, I mean, this, the Google solution or the cloud solution. So that makes sense that that wouldn't really require any additional IT infrastructure, but additional cameras and whatnot in the rooms, obviously there's, there's a cost for that. There's also the cost of networking and, and all the some components of the IT infrastructure that would need to be at least addressed.
I think Joe Judge, our technology coordinator would be the best person to answer that. Infrastructure wise, I haven't, we haven't really discussed any concerns about our wifi and things like that within the district. We have started to investigate some of the neat technology that sort of follows the teacher and videotapes as the teacher is moving around. But we haven't officially priced those out yet.
Then lastly, are we making any considerations for, for individuals that would, 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 would likely choose the. Online version of education or online option of education? That due to maybe health constraints or various other reasons, but yet don't have the tools to actually participate.
Yes, we do have a plan for, just like during the, the COVID crisis that surprised us, we were able to provide households with at least one device. And we also have. Investigated the jetpacks and different things like that to help students to have wifi at home.
Thank you.
Linda, I have a question. If a student, one of the concerns that people have mentioned is that a student wouldn't be able to maybe. Be in AP classes or honors classes due to availability, especially at the higher level. If a student were to start off the first trimester online. And then transfer into the school for the second trimester. Would they be able to be in an AP or an honors class at that time if their grades allowed for that? Or if they're making the plan and they are in general ed classes, are they making that commitment for the year?
I believe that they always have the opportunity at the trimester to join a new. A new course. I think, are you asking if we'd have enough kids to take an AP online Euler class and then?
Well, I know that was one that was kind of asked and it wasn't, it was kind of if there was enough. So what I'm wondering is if a student transitions back from online to a face-to-face class, they come back to the high school, come back to the middle school. Could they then take the higher level class if they were unable to? In the online format due to lack of students?
I think that's a scenario that could be worked out on a case by case basis. So depending on the student, depending on what. Equivalent course they are in when they're on the online program. I think that's a perfect example of something that would be worked out with the counselor, the administrator, the teacher and the program. To be able to do everything that we can so that those students have all those options when they return.
Linda, I have a question. Is there any way, for example, for those specialty, you know, courses, AP? That are smaller that the teacher could actually teach face-to-face and have at the same time leveraging technology where if a student was home could take part in it. Granted, the student would have to do it during the session period of time that period three, when that class is taken, they would have to be paying attention. But now similar to what CMU does, you have, the teachers can teach live and have some in class and then also have a virtual at the same time. More for them to observe and partially partake because of that two way net of the technology has, has. There been much thought about that as an option with some of these more specialty advanced classes?
To just, to teach the live version to the students that are present and then also have the online Oilers watch from home?
Yes.
I, I think that model would work at the high school level. I don't know if there are any. Added layers of accountability for such a high level class like an AP class, but. Obviously more and more our colleges are doing it and. Most of our students heading off to college are going to have their first line, first classes online. This fall, so.
Has, has there been a lot of second?
I can't hear Tim anymore.
No. Tim, are you muted? So while you work to figure that out, Tim, I will say that one of the parts of our discussion regarding that has, has been that we can do that as long as. The video is focused on the instructor and not on the other students in the class. So if there was. One-on-one follow-up or feedback that the teacher would have to do with the student that was virtual. They would have to do that at another setting so that we're not violating any students' FERPA rights.
Yeah. And I think I lost some conductivity. A thing popped up. My, my question was, um. You know what? Went completely out of my head. Don't you hate that? It sounded so great the first time I asked it. If that comes back in, I'll, I will chime back in and ask, re-ask the question. Does anyone else have any questions for Linda regarding this Oilers online structure? And this is an opportunity.
Um, I have one question. Classes that have labs, what, what do they do online? You know, like chemistry, biology? How do they handle the labs for, for something along that line?
I mean, I would think that especially since, you know, the, the two weeks of learning that they just, I guess it was one week. We did the remote learning essentials and the big focus on it is project-based learning. And so I believe that, you know, our teachers are very skilled and sending activities that would, you know, they probably can't do quite the replication of. Chemistry chemicals at home. But you know, between some of the amazing online tools that they, that are available. I think they can replicate a lot of that learning.
I remember like my question. Was there enough of the secondary teachers who took the online training, took advantage of the online, how to teach online training to provide these courses? Or was it primarily the lower L staff that were taking advantage of this?
No, I think it was a nice mixture. We had excellent attendance. All levels.
So in general, most topics and most grade levels will be able to be covered with the core, but the question is some of the more advanced. Honors type programs, there may not be options just because some of the logistics and or various things that could be different because it's so unique.
Right.
Any other questions for Linda? Linda, could you share some of the people that were helping you would do all this work in this?
You're gonna ask me that. I did start a list and I feel like I'm missing a few, but we had Amanda Carey, Kaylee Vanderbahn, Stephanie Terpstra, Andrea Kissler. Kristen Willey, Jill Jacobowski, Megan Stenbridge, Kate Wurzing. Katie Rinkie and. Kim, Mrs. Bishop, Kim Bishop were actively involved with lots of the research. Who am I forgetting, Jen? We've had. And this team is going to continue to kind of. Continue researching our, our specifics and you know, kind of. Shape, continue to shape our research for this. We, we feel like we, we've made some good progress and. We'll keep, keep working on it.
Thank you.
Do you have a question if it's all right?
Yeah.
Well, Brandon.
On the slide earlier, it had an eighty-eight percent number on it and a fifty-three, I believe, percent number. Um, the fifty-three percent, that was how many said they were planning to do online classes?
No, that was, so that was the number from the survey that we did at the beginning of July. Fifty-three percent said they would return their, their students would return to face-to-face classes. And it was right around twenty-one percent that said that they would be interested in the online option. And then another twenty-three percent that said they weren't sure which option they would be interested in. So that is, you know, right around was nine hundred sixty-eight families that took the survey. And, and certainly I understand that we were just getting a very basic baseline feel for interest. I know that it's difficult for families to make decisions when they don't have all the information, but that was what we received. From the survey that we sent out at the beginning of July.
That helps. Thank you.
I don't know if this is an appropriate time to ask this question, so please tell me if it's, it's something that's going to be covered later. But could we talk just briefly about like transitions? So I know. There is a chance we, we could go back into a stage three and everyone would go online. Knowing that that isn't necessarily where we're starting at, or it hasn't been. That's not what we're talking about just yet, but if we do, would the students who are transitioning from face-to-face classes? Into an online learning, would they just kind of pick up potentially the Euler, Oilers online? Or would they be doing something completely separate?
So I, I think depending on when that happens, I, I think it is likely that it would be separate. So. Just, just say for an example, if we were able to return to in-person instruction. And say we were there for the first three weeks of what is supposed to be our school year. In those three weeks, we would have a group of students that are involved in the Oilers online program. And then if we move back into phase three, we would have students that were in in-person classes that would then move into an online program. I think we would still keep those two groups of students separate. I think that the Oilers online would have a clear structure. My guess is with the phase three, we would have a beginning and an end where we would move back to phase four. And want to return to face-to-face instruction. So I would envision us keeping those two groups separate if it was in that scenario. And for some reason, we moved into phase three now and started the school year in a virtual environment. Then everyone probably would be together and then we might make those decisions to pull groups apart as we determine how we're able to return to school. But once we have the system in place for our Oilers online, I, I don't know that combining those classes together make it any easier. I think that keeping the groups separate is probably our better course of action. I do think that's one thing that's really important to share with the board and with our community members that are watching. We know this is a very fluid situation, so we're developing these plans based on where we are today. This could look different tomorrow and we have to recognize that. And so we're trying to make the best plans based on the information that we have today. So our teachers. Have, we, we've talked quite a bit with the bargaining team about their ability to be prepared for the transition. Back to a virtual environment, back to a face-to-face environment, recognizing that we may bounce back and forth throughout this school year.
Jen, I have another question. If, do we have any clarification on what? Power we have to force students to do online if they won't follow social distancing?
So let me just make sure I'm understanding your question. If, if it becomes a disciplinary issue for a student to. Not follow our guidelines as far as social distancing, mask wearing, those kinds of things. Do we have the ability to say that they have to enroll in a virtual program?
Right.
Is that basically what you're asking? So I would say the technical answer to that is yes. Now I, I would definitely want to make sure that we engage in a lot of problem solving with the student, with the parents, with the teachers. Just trying to figure out what we can do to help that student be successful in a face-to-face environment. But as a public school, when we offer a variety of different options, we can offer a student a change in educational placement. And that could be into a virtual program if needed. We would have to make sure that we give the student the tools necessary to be successful in that program. With the idea that they're not being successful in the in-person program. And so it might be another option for them.
Jen, why don't we go on to the next topic?
Okay. So next we are going to talk about our balanced calendar program and Diane is here. Thank you, Diane.
Hi. So my little piece of this very complicated pie is just to share with the board. Some of the things we've been working on, tweaking some of the nuances and communications that we've had with parents in order. To get our balanced calendar year two program off and, and running. So the communication, I'm just going to go over some of the communication that we've sent out and. First and foremost, the teacher letter, because that's what all the kids love to get. So I have to put that first. Teachers have written letters to parents and, and in that letter, we were able, because all of our teachers have set up their. Their Google classrooms, we were able to give all of the parents. Their teacher's code and also their login. So if, like we've been talking about this fluid. Plan, something happens backwards, all parents will have their, their Google classrooms. Also in those letters, we talked about supplies and how in elementary we usually share, you know, that's part of. One of the things that we try to teach little ones is to share their supplies. We share crayons, we share scissors and, and whatnot. So this year, of course, with COVID, we won't be able to do that. So. We have let parents know that if they send something in, we will create individual toolboxes. For our kids to use. We also shared via the teacher letter, our open house format. And we have a virtual for our first and second grade classrooms. Our kindergarten, because it's a transition and a lot of parents, this is their first, you know, go at school. We're going to try a face-to-face with that where parents will be scheduled certain times in order to keep as few as students. In the building as possible and the kindergarten teacher has been gracious enough to. Contact all of our balanced calendar kindergarten students and sign them up for a time. When they come to school for the face-to-face. Open house, we are going to have different stations, one-way traffic. So they'll come in one door and, and exit out the other door. We're going to try to keep the, the pace going so there isn't lines that get clogged up. We also thought, although it's not the best way to not let parents and kids come into the classroom, but kind of get a sneak peek. And so the teacher can give them information from a distance. They can at least look in the room, peek around. Because we know that we don't want to disinfect the classroom after every family. So they'll walk up to a desk. We thought we could also have some specials teachers there. They could get enrollment packets if they're new families that haven't enrolled. We could get work from, from them, but the other open houses would be online and available. Balanced Calendar Open House is August third from six to seven thirty. So. At six o'clock in their Google classroom, the teachers are preparing a virtual, this is my classroom. Introducing themselves, showing them around the room and they'll be able to actually access the Google classroom for the first time in case that becomes necessary. Later on. Also in that communication that we sent last week, we sent a principal letter. And that was pretty typical, a pretty typical balanced calendar letter except for. Where, you know, we just want to let parents know that. We're still working very hard with our district leaders to come up with this plan that we might need to tweak. Change as we go that yes, school will feel and look a little different. We're going to be diligent in our efforts to keep. Our students and our staff safe. I mean, we're, we're mothers, we're aunts, we're grandmas. We just really want them to know that first and foremost, safety is our main priority. Um, also in the principal's letter, there's important information about balanced calendar. In the era of COVID, we know that for our fall inter sessions, we won't be going on field trips. We will do more virtual learning. We usually have CMU STEM come in. And, um, we don't know that that will be possible, but maybe we can zoom in with them and do activities that way. So that was a little tweak and change, um, for balanced calendar, um, on the principal's letter that went home. Also, um, we had, uh, the COVID information that we sent home. And again, Susan and I sit in on all of the administrator meetings created, um, a back-to-back form. And it talks about like transportation, student arrival, breakfast, hall passing. And then there's columns that say Pollin and McGuire. So, um, if it's a little bit different on arrival, then they know exactly what it looks like at Pollin or what it looks like at McGuire. And so if you have any specific questions about any of those topics, lunch recess, classroom dismissal, I don't feel like I need to go through those step by step because we're adhering to the elementary plan and overlaying it onto the balanced calendar plan. So again, there was general reopening guidelines. And one of the things we really wanted to make sure that parents knew is that the balanced calendar is a face-to-face program. So if you choose the Oilers online, that isn't going to begin until later in August. That's why Linda, when she talked about it, they still have some time to tweak and change and firm up their plans. So parents that are choosing balanced calendar are choosing the face-to-face option. Peak Information, uh, we do have good news on that front. We did meet virtually with, um, our Peak City people. And we are going to, starting Monday, uh, August 10th, be able to offer after-school care using the same kind of protocols and guidelines that we've talked about throughout the evening, um, with, with that program. So we did send some information in our packet, um, communicating with parents that that would be available. I know I'm getting some, um, parents that are asking about before-school care. And we have, I think, um, figured out how to do that. I'm pretty sure that if parents want that option of before-school right now, because, um, we want to limit the number of people and, and there aren't as many people as there will be later in August, um, parents can drop their students off at Kenny and we'll have them bus over to McGuire or Pollin before school. We have plans and I know, um, you might be interested and I can make sure that the board gets these packets. And, um, and also, uh, Jennifer, whoever wants the different, the five different intercessions. And, um, we have some good ideas about, um, what those will look like. We talked a little bit about, but we still, um, need to talk to, um, Jennifer and probably Linda about what happens if we do slide back into phase three. Um, and balanced calendar has to go virtual. Will we teach through the intercessions or will we have the intercessions? And I think the, um, balanced calendar teachers thought that we would still do the intercessions up until about Christmas. And then, um, if it happens after that, then maybe we would teach through them virtually so that the balanced calendar would end at the same time as the traditional calendar, if that makes sense. So that's kind of the communication, the overview of, um, some of the nuances of this. I feel pretty confident Josh is going to come over and meet with Susan and I on Thursday. We're going to walk through our school, we're going to mark out our, our spaces. We're going to put our hand sanitizers and our, um, sanitizing stations at the door. I think the procedures that we have, like Jennifer said, for that soft opening, um, will get, will allow us to see if we've missed anything. But I, I feel pretty confident in, in how we've organized and planned.
Any questions for Diane?
Yeah, I'm getting tired.
I have one question. Um, are we still planning on starting on the fifth for balanced calendar?
Yes, starting on the fifth. Teachers, we have teacher meetings, so, um, I think someone asked that question about, oh, to, get everyone on the same page. So we have two days of, uh, time where teachers, Monday and Tuesday, will be in the building, getting their rooms ready. But we do have a morning meeting on Monday that, um, that's top on the agenda is COVID guidelines and procedures. And, um, so that's what we'll be starting out with on Monday. And then Wednesday, balanced calendar starts.
Linda, I'm very pleased you did a very nice job with all of your communication structures that you've done. Is there any place online where families can see this information?
I can make that happen for sure.
I said no under the COVID. I know we have a COVID page that we've built in other areas. And so sometimes, um, giving multiple avenues for sharing of this information could be of value. Not only that, but the non-balanced calendar families could see some of the communications and systems that we've been trying to do and using the balanced calendar. It might help them better understand as things get closer. Because the school starts with August 26th, um, for the main school. So it may help them get, get, uh, answer some of their questions they may have. So just looking at the two paths, right? This one alternative, I know many of the key families have already received this information and it had more direct connect, which makes the most sense. But I didn't know about broadening out some of that information.
Good idea.
Does anyone have any questions for Diane regarding the balanced calendar?
Diane, how many people do you have signed up? I mean, is everybody coming back or have you lost a lot because they don't want to do face-to-face?
Um, we have lost a few, um, students I know at Pollin. I can't speak, um, for McGuire. I think her, her older kid number, I think fifth grade looked pretty solid. I know that, um, my classrooms are anywhere from 16 to 18, which in a COVID era is, is doable. So, um, but we have lost a few, yes.
Okay. I, I am just a little concerned about the fifth being the start date, um, for balanced calendar. I don't know if there's an option for us to look at pushing it back to the traditional calendar or at least discussing it a little bit further with the folks who plan to participate in the balanced calendar. But I feel like we can't even, um, make a solid decision quite yet. The next week is pretty hasty, so just keep that in mind.
Jen, is there any other, um, topics in the presentation or is this the end of the presentation?
I just have a, a few summary comments. I mean, I just, I just want to reassure you all that we will continue working with our parents and our staff members to answer questions and problem solve their unique situations. We, um, started sharing today a section on our website that has information out there. I know that I continue to hear from families, how can we make a decision when we don't know all of the information? And, and I definitely understand that, so I'm trying to put information out as much as possible. We also need to continue working through our contractual implications with our bargaining units. And so that's a big task that's at, at hand. The, this evening, I mean, I think, um, Courtney's conversation just really hit the nail on the head is that if we are going to move forward with a balanced calendar program, starting on August 5th, we do need your approval, even if it's just for that program this evening, um, in order to meet the state requirements. After that point, we can continue to update the board, update our community, look at approval for additional programs after that. But in order to be able to move forward with that program in the way it was designed, we do need that to happen, um, tonight. Um, and then I also just wanted to reassure, um, you know, our community that there will be all sorts of additional opportunities to get questions answered. As we continue to get additional guidance, we'll be hosting parent information meetings. We will have building, open houses and orientation sessions. Those orientation sessions are especially important for the students that are in a transition year. So like Diane mentioned, our incoming kindergarten students, our incoming third grade students, our incoming sixth graders and ninth graders. We, we know that they missed the opportunity to tour their new buildings, uh, last spring. And so we want to make sure that they still have that opportunity. Um, and then also we're doing some modified kindergarten kickoff sessions so that families still get the information that they need. So there's much more to come, um, but we are in a situation where if we're going to start this program, uh, we have to have some sort of approval, um, to be able to move forward. So, um, I, I'll, I'll leave that conversation up to the board and, and certainly we are all here, uh, to answer any questions that you all might have.
I also wanted just to mention to the board and to the public, so in our board packet, um, we have building or grade building, um, specific information. So there is a Muppets Middle School document. There's a Fancher and Mary McGuire Elementary document, which is the, the upper lower Ls. It's a DK second grade document. I mean, so we have it broken into, um, more granular than for a whole spread. It's been broken down by building, um, and so there's another, other tools that we've been able to look at. We also have the, um, our COVID response plan. It's a template that was built by many entities across the state of Michigan. And this is the form or the template that had to be submitted, um, to the ISD to go to the state. And that this is where, under the executive order 202142, that we have to approve some plan to open school. Um, and so, uh, and Jen, is it true that this plan is, um, board approved? But there are no other approvals, but there is a submission process? Is that a correct statement?
That is correct. That is different than our continuity of learning plan that was approved by the RESD. This return to school plan is only approved by the Board of Education.
And if we do not approve this tonight, in general, balanced calendar won't start until a future date?
Correct.
And this plan is not locked, it is a living document?
Correct.
We can change it at any time and adapt.
Yep. The situation is a very fluid and living situation.
Jen, did I understand, um, that you said we could approve this just for the balanced calendar? And then, um, go from there or do we have to approve it for everything?
So minimally, that's what we need your approval on if we're going to offer that program. Um, I understand that there's been a lot of information shared this evening. And so if there is additional work that the board thinks we need to do, based on the information that was shared, I'm comfortable with going back to our team of administrators and teachers and figuring out what that might look like. I do recognize that this, these are very, very difficult decisions. It's difficult conversations. But if, if the general sense is that we need more information, we need to be able to answer more questions for our families, we can continue to work on that. But then yeah, I would ask that you consider potentially approving the balanced calendar plan so that we can start the balanced calendar program on August 17th.
And just to clarify, that means, I think, like, uh, by August 20th, we would have to approve the plan for the remainder of the school district to start school on that?
Actually, per MDE, we have to have our plans approved by August 17th.
17th?
Could a parent who is in the balanced calendar program right now switch at this point in opt-out? Or are they kind of, are they locked in at this point?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I ask is that I'm just wondering if, if every child that is starting next week, it is a parent's choice that their child start next week? Or start the fifth?
Yeah, that is correct. They can make the decision to change programs. I know that Diane and Susan and our teachers have been contacting families personally in addition to all the materials that they sent them last week.
Okay. So they had the option, or they still have the option, that if they do not want to start, or they do not want to go face-to-face, or if they need more time or anything like that, they could switch into a later date and they don't have to start the balanced calendar on the fifth?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So boards, looking at the hour and knowing that in general after 10 o'clock, after being in a board meeting since 6:30, it's all the information, we start to get tired. So my thought is along the lines of, um, do we as a board want to move forward with just the balanced calendar component of it? Do we as a board want to move with approving everything as it is now, knowing that we could dare to change and approve a different structure? And then if we have noted any of those, then what is it that we are looking for from the, our team to provide information and clarity, to provide the structures for the preparedness plan and response plan, um, based on the information that we were provided?
At this time, I don't feel comfortable making a choice for anything other than the balanced calendar. So I'm, I'm asking that maybe we put the high school, middle school and traditional calendar, um, off a little bit for, for a choice and only focus on the balanced calendar. But I'd be open to hearing what other people have to say too.
I, I was going to go the same way with you. I feel that that age group, according to the research I've been doing, it's, it's the lowest risk. And I feel that the, the staff know, obviously know what the, you know, the situation is and has still gone on with it. As long as the parents are aware and have the, the choice to go in or out, I think it's a very small group and the cohorts would be workable. And I think it would be really good, give us a lot of good information to make a more informed decision. I think my big problem comes mostly junior high, high school with such a diverse population. And so many people, being able to control that population is going to be harder. So, you know, if we got some kind of a feel for how many were actually going to come back, would that make a difference to how much staff we had? That kind of thing would come into play as far as the upper L. But I would be comfortable with the balanced calendar going forward.
I, I support that as well. I would definitely like to see, um, after the first week or two, some lessons learned, uh, that could go along with it. Kind of hear how that's going, what we learned and what we need to modify in the existing plan for all other groups.
So from the very beginning of, well, actually I'll just go back just a little bit. I have a little bit of, um, unique experience with the situation we're in. Most people know I run a martial arts school and I had 81 students. Phase four allowed us to open up under limited conditions and we did a soft opening on June 14th. Working up to that, I put out surveys to my students, very similar. I had 81 students, 44 said they'd be comfortable coming back July 5th, when we started our full opening. And then of course, uh, things changed. Things started going up and of the 44 people who said they were prepared and excited to come back, I think we've had maybe 20, 21 come back. So, um, I expect those numbers, if we did another survey, I expect those numbers to be wrong. I expect that, I mean, I kind of hope, not that many people want to send their kids back to school. But the other thing is, this has always been a balance for me. The parents get to choose the online or the in-person class. And one thing that I'm not clear about, you know, I would like to be cleared, uh, clarified is if we do this hybrid option, it sounds like it's taking away the choice of doing pure face-to-face or pure online. And that would bother me. So more information about the hybrid informa-, uh, how that would work, um, I would like that.
Yeah, and I think, Brandon, that would be what we would have to figure out. Could we figure out a way to offer full face-to-face, a hybrid option and a full online option? Because we only have so many teachers, right? And so to figure out how we can make those schedules work, um, that, that's, that's work that we can do. I guess also to see the idea of a, um, a, a hybrid option, um, that could mean a lot of different things to a lot of people. So I think we have to define what that would be and what that would look like. So I think we have to define what that would be and what that would look like, and then try to move forward to see how we can make that work for our district.
Well, and so diversity is a good thing, and not just diversity of identity, but diversity of thought and diversity of beliefs. And having that diversity means we have a diversity of willingness to take risks. All right, and so I have a good core of my students who, their parents, their families, we're ready for them to come back. We've implemented all of the state procedures, which I appreciate, which Governor Whitmer has done. She hasn't made every, I haven't agreed with everyone for decisions, but I think she's done a good job, and I think she's given us a good place to start working moving forward. And that's exactly what we did in my school. And I can tell you that we do a really good job of following the COVID preparations or procedures. And so I fully expect our teachers are going to, because I know they're more capable than I am. However, it's all about choice. There's so, like, if you are not comfortable taking this risk, then please take online classes. In my mind, this wasn't about getting everybody up and ready to go, and we're getting everything back. It's not what happened at my school. There's lots of things that change, it's all fluid, and, but the choice goes both ways. So one thing that is important for me is, I want to make sure that the people who are comfortable, and for them, it's not a risk to their family, they're ready to come back, that they have that option. The people who, the risk is unacceptable for their family, they're willing, they they have the option to stay home. But that option and that choice should also be for the teachers. So I would like the plan to make sure that there's no teacher being forced to do in face lessons if they don't want to. There needs to be a choice all around to keep people safe. So I do think going with just the balanced calendar right now. On top of that, if we voted for anything else, the Open Meeting Act issue that we got going on right now, I think it's going to become a huge problem, because I've already got texts from like six people, and I think making any important decisions with this accidental, with the media act thing, we should probably not take any big votes today. So the balanced calendar, I'm.
Courtney, what are your thoughts?
I'm not comfortable with moving forward with anything today, including the balanced calendar. I think that it is a bit farfetched to think that we really have any solid plans with, like, real, real set in stone stuff that we know is going to work. I think we need to, I I don't want to make any of these decisions until I have some more information, I guess, on teacher perception. I I'm not even sending my son to daycare right now, so I just don't feel comfortable even asking our families in the community or our teachers to come in if they're also not comfortable.
I agree.
That there's been kind of a connotation that's gone around tonight, that we have a lot of really big decisions and not a lot of time. So I think really putting us on a time crunch of the 5th is is a little outreaching.
I agree with the structure that of moving forward with the balanced calendar school. I think there's a lot of protocols, a lot of work that's been put into place. I think it's medically feasible that what we've done, I know the health department has chimed in and agrees with that. I know that there, our law firm has chimed in and agreed with that. So from the health perspective, from the legal perspective, I know the educators themselves are in the conversation and are willing and open to what is moving forward. I don't think, time is not our friend, and we've known that since March. We've had very little time to much of this stuff, but we still have to move forward for the children in our district. I feel that there is some space for improvement. I think our our lower L structures seem to be rather strong. It will never be perfect. We can't, it's not an option. It's impossible to achieve perfection, but I think we have a lot of things in place that will bring us very close to bringing and making sure our staff and our students will be happy and and making great efforts to achieve that. But the the bottom line, I feel, is I think the balanced calendar deserves to be able to start next week or in seven days from today. I think there are some good things in place. I don't think it is a test. I think the communications with those families have been strong. I've heard they've been strong. I feel that they feel they're comfortable with what's moving forward. I think the the systems in place and the team that are pushing it forward, I think, are there. When I've read all of the materials, when I've read the the response plan that's being submitted in the building plans, I think we have a lot of the structures are there. We aren't changing the curriculum drastically, where we are in some of the other programmings. I think we're keeping it consistent, and it was developed to be flexible with the intersessions. And so my thought is that I would like to see a motion that we approve the plan for the balanced calendar and that we set a date to have at least a minimum one other board meeting and conversation regarding the rest of the district. It may be easier for us to break it into smaller components, where we have an elementary conversation and a secondary conversation, since they are so drastically different. The students are different, their behaviors are different. But in general, when I go around town and I see how families react when they're in Walmart, and when they're in Myers, and when they're in restaurants, I think that we have the ability in our communities to actually step up and do what's right for our children. I think the school district infrastructures, I think, are going to be strong to be able to support them. And I think we have already shown that we've had the ability to turn on a dime and to switch into something that we've never switched before. But I think with this planning, I think we are significantly farther advanced than we were in March, and I think we have the ability to deliver the curriculum that we have approved. So I think it is a valid thing to move forward with the balanced calendar. I think rethinking the high school a little bit, there's some value there. Most of it is because of the students and some of the concerns I have on what the students feel and how the students can behave, more than I think of as anything else. I think if they join the team, I think that many of these things are these plans in place where health and safety will work, but if they turn against, it will fall apart quickly. I don't think there's enough structure there to be able to support that, that kind of a transition, where we saw that more in the elementary buildings. So I'd like more information on primarily the high school. I think I feel comfortable with the way the middle school seems to be structured, but just by design of the middle school, it was designed to be closer to what we view as smaller cohorts, and I think there's value to that. But I am very concerned about, at the high school level, of not offering the great things that we have at the high school and having it stopped because of fill in the blank. But it's also hard, because we've also been, we offer a very diverse, a very broad program at the high school, which makes it even that more difficult to to redesign in a three-week period of time. But unfortunately, we have three weeks. But what's good to know is we can improve on that as we move forward. This is not locked. It was designed to be flexible. I think the foundation that we were presented today is very strong. Working in the university and the school district worlds that I work in, this was done very, very well. I have not seen other bands anywhere near to this level. The university has massive infrastructure and a lot more resources than we do, but yet we are, I think, are doing some good programming that can reach up toward that. Until this, the legislature gives public education more money, we will be able to function like a university. And so we have to do the best we can with what we have. So that's what I'm looking for, that's some of my thoughts, and some of the questions that I have. I am concerned about the open meetings component of this. That was just totally a happenstance, the way the Zoom contract does and the ability to open this up. And so having this available for others to see and having other conversations in the future, I think, will help that. Totally unforeseen, and we apologize to everyone who tried to get in. It's interesting, and this is probably one of the largest board meetings we've ever had, and I think it's great that our community has stepped up. I think I'm a little concerned with some of the comments. I think we need to work on mindfulness a little bit and think openly and take deep breaths about some of these things. I'm not too impressed with some of the comments that I've seen, and so I hope the community understands that everyone's trying their best in a very short amount of time, and that we need to work better as a community to build and not to tear down and to look for options and opportunities, not look for failures and shortcomings. And so I am asking, is there anyone who wishes to put a motion forward to approve the plan for the balanced calendar, which is just K, is DK in balanced calendar? It's K5, correct?
Just K5, one section of each grade level.
I have a quick question about this. Do we have any information regarding what teacher's input is? Is that available to us?
Yes, during the presentation, they tried to share some of the educators that were on the communities that they talked to, but we can get more detailed information of all of the members that were in the different components who were part of those conversations.
I just, I mean, the balanced calendar staff.
Diane, can you talk about the work that's already happened with balanced calendar staff members?
Yeah, our staff, balanced calendar staff have met twice over the summer, and I haven't surveyed them or asked them the question about how comfortable they are. But it's a great work environment. Everyone is contributing, everyone is, seems to be, you know, on the same page, knowing that things are going to look and feel different, but I didn't feel like anybody was off the page of going forward with this starting at all. It's really not a, I mean, like, I wouldn't be the one to survey them anyways, but in talking with them and communicating with them and creating these documents and sending them home, we've had a lot of good conversations, and everyone's really looking forward to it. And I hope I'm not speaking out of turn for anyone, but that's the vibe I get. That's my honest vibe.
Well, if if someone who was ready to go and ready to get back, but for whatever reason, they've just lost all confidence and and they don't want to do the balanced calendar, will there be an option for them to switch roles? Or if we vote on this right now, are we making a decision for them?
That's Jennifer's question.
Yeah, we would we would have to connect with MPEA and look at the staffing process and look at open positions and and that sort of thing, but it it wouldn't be unheard of. I mean, we do have, what, Linda, two open positions in the district right now, elementary level? So I mean, there would be options for them to take something different, but we'd have to work through that process with MPEA.
I just think that we should be cautious in making a decision tonight and and realizing that we don't have specific information or statements from teachers outside of just our interpretation of that, so.
And I want to be clear, Jen, that I like your plan. I'm actually skeptical about the hybrid, because it it really feels like it's coming from a place that I don't like. What I'm hearing is a bunch of people telling me that they're very uncomfortable about going back to school and they really don't want to do it. But if other kids are going back to school, then they don't want their kids to miss out on the chance, so now maybe they will send them back, but they don't want to send them back five days, they want to send them back two days. And it's just like, if if you're that worried about sending your kids back, that's fine, that's great, that makes sense. Don't send them back, do online classes. And and maybe this is a good opportunity for some at-risk, not at-risk for COVID, but just at-risk in general, kids to get some extra FaceTime with students, because I assume they're the ones that are going to be coming in person if this were to be a split, like I imagine anyways. So I want you to know that I like the plan. I want to hear more information about the hybrid version, but if it takes away the choice, then it doesn't have my support. But I also do think the choice needs to be on the teacher's side, too. So I I'm with this to be a way, if teacher's not comfortable, then they can opt out.
I will second that, I totally agree with you. I also don't want staff to feel forced to come back into a situation they're not comfortable with either. So that would be my only concern here, is if we're forcing staff to to go into a position that they don't want to go into, I would definitely want them to be able to have the option to opt out. But if everyone else is making the choice free, you know, freely, I'm very comfortable with what we have in place.
So Tim, how do we word this?
Is there anyone who wants to make a motion and we'll do it through voting?
I'll make the motion. I I I make a motion that we proceed with the balanced calendar. My only caveat is I don't want any staff to feel forced to go into it, but if parents and staff go voluntarily, I'd like to see that option go forth.
Second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Deb, I can't see you, did you get that information? Okay. Are there any further questions regarding the motion? Okay, so John, we have to do a roll call vote.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
Brenda McQueen?
Yes.
John Mazurkovich? Yes. Sheila Murphy?
Sorry, yes.
Tim Motiker? Was that a yes, Tim?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
No.
That's everyone. So it is a, a motion passes, and so the plan is approved for the balanced calendar, as the motion was stated. And so, Jen, do you feel like you have some information to move forward with some of the rest of the plan and the rest of the district?
I definitely do. We'll continue developing our plan, answering questions, putting things in place, and we'll plan for another presentation at our board meeting next Monday. I have already secured the Zoom ability, so we'll have more capacity for public comment, and we'll be able to move forward like that. So I do sincerely apologize for that, that was my error.
I mean, we'll send a release out to everyone, letting them know what has happened and that they can observe, and that we will be continuing this conversation in a week from today. And also that, go ahead, Jen, try it again.
I want to say that anyone that reached out to me, I did share with them that the meeting is being recorded and that will be shared on our website and through our Facebook page as soon as it downloads.
Also, no, there is information on the school district's website to, with some more of this more detailed information that we were talking about, and I'm sure this PowerPoint that we had this evening will also be put up there as another resource. But knowing that we are still working on some of these things, we will post that decision that was made, and please let the families of the balanced calendar know the board's conversation and and our thoughts about making sure that they're comfortable with the way the structures are. Jen, are we okay now with everything that you needed?
I think so.
That being everything for the board, is anything else that the board member would like to join in? I apologize for the lateness of the evening, that being everything before the board. Thank you, Steph, for joining us. I'll call this meeting adjourned.